The city council adjourning from a closed session. There's nothing to report. At this time, I want to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, January the 9th. And Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, January 11th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, January 13th at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the speaker cards. Those are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilman Detrick.
Yeah, I wanted to request if we could close the meeting in honor of Alan Wagner, longtime real estate agent, community member, very active in the community, is held in very, very high regards by all the realtors in the Sacramento region. So I would like to see if we could close the meeting in his honor tonight.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, excellent. All right, next item.
We can move into the roll call. Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Sun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. A pledge of allegiance is next. I see Oscar O'Conne here. Oscar, where are you at? Why don't you honor us by leading us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of every regular city council meeting, the city council always like to invite the members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and I have an agenda in front of me. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstention. All right, next item.
That'll take us to Section 3, the closed session, and there are two items that I will announce. That's Item 3A, public employee employment appointment for position of city manager, and Item 3B, conference of labor negotiator for position of city manager. And at this time, I don't display anybody signed up to speak under public. I do have one member of the public signed up, Ms. Lynn Wheat, to speak on this item.
Okay, Ms. Lynn Wheat, come on up.
Doesn't sound like it's on.
Okay, good evening. I will begin by wishing you all a happy new year 2019. As I saw this on the agenda, I want to bring up that I know that we did do, or the city did a survey to get input from residents here what they'd like to see in our new city manager. I haven't seen any results from that survey or any feedback. I know that this has been a closed-session item on last few agendas. I'd like us to definitely have some discussion or dialogue with the general public before a decision is made. It is my hope that we truly indeed are going to get some fresh eyes, and I, as I said earlier, I would like to see somebody from, outside our region that can indeed bring some fresh eyes to our city and this region. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, I want to close public comments, and we'll be back. City Manager Position, I am happy to report that by a vote of five to zero, the city council has appointed Jason Berman as the City Manager of the City of Elk Grove effective immediately. The city council has directed the city -- The city council has directed the city human resource, resources and legal staff to prepare a formal contract to be brought back for consideration by the city council at the January 23rd, 2019 city council meeting. On behalf of the city council, I congratulate Mr. Berman on his appointment. We are excited to continue working with him as the city manager. And at this point, I'd like to invite Mr. Berman to say a few words.
Thank you. I apologize to the audience for my delay in the meeting tonight for my cause, but I do want to thank the mayor and the entire city council for your support and your confidence in me. It means a lot to me. I'm honored and humbled for the opportunity to serve as Elk Grove's next city manager. Elk Grove, we all know, Elk Grove is an amazing community, and I'm blessed to have the privilege of working with such an amazing staff. They're talented, they're hardworking, they're dedicated, they're the best team that I've ever worked with in my career. So we are blessed to have such competent individuals. And I want to commit to you, members of the city council and members of the public, that I will serve with integrity, with honesty, with professionalism, and with fairness, that we want to hold up high standards for the organization that we already have in place and set new standards for transparency, for openness, for fairness, and opportunities for everyone, for inclusiveness. Elk Grove has a bright future. There's a lot of things on the horizon for our community. I look forward to helping Elk Grove reach its true potential and achieve the shared vision that we have and the council has for this community. And I thank you all, and I thank members of the community for the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I do have to leave. I just had a passing in the family, so I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, that I have to leave, but I do want to say quick congratulations to Mr. Berman. I work both in Sacramento and the City of Citrus Heights, and I've worked with many city managers, and I am excited to be able to continue along this path on this council, guide the city, and work along with Mr. Berman. Congratulations, and again, I apologize, everyone, I do have to rush out.
Member Detrick?
Yeah, Jason, I wanted to, I privately congratulated you, but wanted to publicly congratulate you, and I think a couple of things that you had mentioned extremely important to me, your honesty, your integrity and morality, unquestionable. And I've had the pleasure of working for you for the last several years. We've had a chance to test drive you for the last seven to eight months as the interim city manager, where you've done a phenomenal job, and I look forward to working with you in the years to come.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'll add to everything that's already been said, and I just want to say that, Jason, you know, you've been stellar as an assistant city manager. You stepped up and, I think, really spread your wings as an interim city manager, and in so doing, you helped us save a little bit of money to recoup some of the offset for the cost of separating from the previous city manager. We did go through a national search in order to do a temperature check to see what other talent was out there and available. I believe 46 or so applicants applied, narrowed down to a field of 12, narrowed down to a field of six. I told Mr. Berman early on in the process, the job essentially was his to lose because of the great things he'd been doing since taking the helm as an interim, and what he had done for, I think, the general morale of the organization, some of the ideas that he had implemented, and I said, "The only way that the job does not become his is it means that somebody came in that really outshined his performance, in which case I'd hope he would pull up a chair and sit next to that person and have something to learn." The person who we employed to do the search came back with what he called top-tier or tier-one candidates, six of them, and of those, Mr. Berman was one of them, and he said, "Look, I can put you in front of some people that I think are just as good as Jason, but I don't have anybody that I would necessarily call better." And so I think at that point, you do have someone who has been a dedicated servant of the city and the community, is obviously someone who you know some of the ins and outs, and so I think that, you know, having heard members of the community, members of the organization, different members of the business community, all saying, "We really think that you ought to stick with what you have," ultimately, I think that was the right decision to make, so I congratulate you very much.
Councilman Sun?
Thank you. I'll just echo some of what Vice Mayor said. You know, when we started this process, I was a huge advocate for going out on a national search because I wanted to see what was out there. At the time, Jason, you weren't sure if you even interested in the job, and I think, as Vice Mayor mentioned, you know, you were doing a good job as assistant city manager, but when you were given the chance to be an interim, in an interim role, I noticed that you'd stepped up your game, and you had listened to not just us, but there's many folks in the community that were voicing their concerns, what they wanted to see in a community manager, things like getting involved with the community, engaging more in the community. You took that to heart in trying to be more innovative with staff. So I saw some things in you that, you know, to me, that put you on that, you know, that list as a potential possibility. As was stated earlier, when we, candidates came in, I think the combination of your resume compared to theirs and the fact that we've had a chance to actually work with you in that role, I think you eclipsed everyone else. So congratulations.
Well, Jason, the way I approached this is, one, I wanted a national search; two, I wanted to look at other candidates from either the region or the state or nationally. And when I had an opportunity to look at that, it was clear that you rose to the top. And this is setting aside the fact that you were the interim city manager. I wanted to look at it with a clear set of eyes, and there was nobody that was impressive enough to beat you out, and so I feel good about this decision, and I'm real confident that you'll do an excellent job. Yeah, thank you. All right, so, next item.
Take us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is the grand jury service presentation by Pat Gaiman, President of the Sacramento County Grand Jurors Association.
That's a hard act to follow. Congratulations. I'm Patricia Gaiman, President of the Grand Jurors Association. We're an organization composed of former members of the grand jury, and we have two very important goals of our group. One is to inform the residents of the county of what the grand jury does, and the second one is to encourage people who are qualified and interested to become members of the grand There's a lot of confusion in the minds of many people about the grand jury versus trial jury, and we have had people who have applied to the grand jury, and when they find out we're talking about a year's service instead of two weeks, they leave the room. So this would hopefully help to explain some of that difference, because the trial juror is, most everybody knows that they've gotten a slip of paper saying, "It's your time, you have to go," and it's usually a criminal trial, though it could be a civil one between a plaintiff and a defendant. And it's usually a week or two weeks, and you're done. The grand jury is not a summons, the grand jury is an application situation, and that is for a year. Runs from July 1st to June 30th of every year. The trial jury usually does mostly criminal things, though some civil. The grand jury can do criminal indictments, but in California, not very often, certainly not in Sacramento, very often, and that disappoints many people who apply because they think they're going to be like on Law &amp; Order, where they get to see mayhem and murder and all of those good things for a whole year, and that doesn't happen. What the grand jury does, it investigates and looks into the operation of the governments within the county. And in the county of Sacramento, that includes the county itself, the seven cities, 14 school districts, including the Los Reyes Community College District, 84 special districts, which includes independent and dependent districts, and 12 joint powers agreement, which of course you all sit on, so you know about those. So basically, in essence, the grand jury is the local government's watchdog, and it's busy doing that for a whole year. Good grand jurors must be impartial, open-minded, closed-mouth, everything that goes on in the grand jury is by law confidential, patient, respectful of the opinion of others, and most importantly, maybe willing to work as a team. This is not a place for people who like to work solo. Legally, people on the grand jury must be 18 years old, they have to have been a citizen of the country for a year and a resident of the county for a year, and able to communicate orally and in writing. There are 19 people on the Sacramento County Grand Jury and 11 alternates. The term, as I said, is from July 1st to June 30th. The grand jury works anywhere from 15 to 25 hours a week. So basically, it is a part-time job, but vacations are allowed. And as I said earlier, work is done in groups or in committees. There is pay. Nobody gets rich serving on the grand jury, but it's $30 per meeting, not to exceed two meetings a day, even if there are more than two meetings a day. And probably important for people in this area, mileage is covered, or RT pass, if that's the way people would like to get downtown, and maybe even more important, parking. The grand jury investigates and reports on the accounts, records, operations, functions of the governmental entities within the county. The grand jury also by law is required to visit all the penal institutions within the county, so that means the two state prisons in Folsom, the county jail, the facility here, the RCCC, and any juvenile facilities. And the grand jury can tour any governmental facility that it would like to. It has the jurisdiction to do that. The grand jury has subpoena powers, they're very serious powers, and they carry clout if they're not observed. The grand jury reviews complaints that are received from the citizenry, and if people want to make a complaint, that complaint form is available on the grand jury website, or a letter can go to the grand jury. The address is on the website, and those will be considered by the members of the grand jury. The grand jury issues a final report on June 30th. Copies are also available on the grand jury site. The selection process is interesting. There are three ways that people can get onto the panel of applicants. One is by appointment or nomination by a judge. That used to be, years ago, the way it was done, and the judges did it all, but that has changed over time. Currently, the county sends out 5,000 postcards to people selected at random from the voter's roll and from the DMV records, and this is basically telling people that if they would like to, they can apply to be a member. And then people learn, hopefully like forms like this, and the people who are viewing, as well as those in the audience, of the grand jury and the application process, and the application is available on the grand juror's site. And it needs to be submitted by January 26th, so that's a couple of weeks from now, so if people are interested, they've got some time to do that. There will be an orientation meeting in February down in the courthouse. Judge Russell Hom, who is the advisor judge, will make a presentation, and then sitting members of the grand jurors will talk to those who are interested in being on the grand jury, and there can be questions back and forth to find out what it's really like. There's an interview process following that, and then the judges get together and they make a nomination. In June, there's a drawing of the 19 members in the alternates. All of the names of the people who have been in the final application pool are put, if you can believe it, into a bingo box, and they're put in there, and the coordinator of the grand jury rolls the box around, and the sitting foreman opens it up, picks out a name, and when 19 names have been picked out, that is the grand jury for the year. And they are sworn in at the time. This is a full judicial hearing, so it's all taken down by the recorder, and the bailiff calls everybody to order, and Judge Russell Hom swears in the members, and then the following January 1st, they are on the grand jury. So there's plenty of information on the grand jury site. Lots of the reports are on there. If anybody is interested in being a member of the grand jury, I suggest to go to the site and look at the reports so you can see what kind of activity is involved. It's a wonderful experience to have. You learn a lot. You can do a lot of good for your community. You meet a lot of interesting people, so if any of you know of people who are interested or yourself are interested, I would hope you suggest that they could get, in the next two weeks, if they want to, to apply for the grand jury. And I want to thank you for your time, because I know you have some very interesting events on the calendar, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next presentation.
Take us to Item 4.2, which is an update on the Elk Grove Regional Veterans Memorial. And I invite Oscar O'Conne up to the speaker podium.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk to you about the veterans memorial, but before that, as you know, today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so I would like to congratulate and say thank you to the chief and the entire police department for the service they give us. And Jason, congratulations. Okay, well, this project has -- yes, sir.
Are you okay with that appointment?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Checking.
This project of the veterans memorial, let me go back. I came here to Elk Grove in 2001 and noticed that we didn't have anything to honor veterans here. So in 2008, when I was, 2007, 2008, when I became president of the Rotary Club, we decided that we were going to start this. Vice Mayor Hume was just coming out, and him and I championed this through the Rotary and decided to do, start getting money. The first years went very well, and we collected close to $90,000. But the project, this project that you see here, had a cost of anywhere between $380,000 and $400,000 at that time, so now it's probably more. Then everything just kind of stopped, so we kind of went back and decided to do it by phases. We figured that if we start with phase one, you know, activity breeds activity, so we can start, we have enough money to put it out to bid, which is going out to bid on the 24th of this month, and hopefully we'll be able to start with the trail that you see here, the yellow trail that goes all the way to the start, the brown star, which is the biggest star. With that, we have that cover, and I think by then we'll be able to start selling the bricks and part of the wall. We have, a brick starts at 200, and then it goes up from there depending on the price or the size of the wall that you want to get, a bench, a rose garden, so we have different options for families or for companies. Now, again, it's going out for bid on the 24th, so I just wanted to come and inform you. We have a sketch of the, that one there is what we're going to be working on. Of course, the trail that you see going into the first and the second star have to be handicap-ready, so it's pretty wide, and it has to have certain type of ground, and, you know, CSD has been working on that, and we're doing it under their specifications and under their supervision, so. One good thing that I see on this is, as a veteran, I can tell you that veterans don't get any recognition. The family gets a flag after the fact. This is going to be one of five in the United States where you can honor a living veteran. You'll be able to take your dad, your brother, your sister, whoever served, and as long as they had honorable or medical discharge, you'll be able to put them there, but you'll be able to tell them, "Well, they're still alive," and thank them, so. That's my presentation right now. I'll probably bring you more information when it goes up to bid. We hope that we can start breaking ground here pretty soon, but it's going out for bid on the 24th, so we still have a ways to go. Any questions?
Questions?
Oscar, for those, for folks who've never seen where this is at, could you give a good description of where it is?
We have a map here, that one. As you can see, this is right by East Stockton Boulevard. If you go into, through East Stockton Boulevard and you get to where the hotel is, when you're going into the park, at the first stop sign, if you look to your left, there's a baseball diamond here. Well, this is all the way in the back. This land here was donated by CSD. It's about two acres, and the first thing we did before even getting started is, I went and talked to all the people that their houses go to that, you know, to that fence, and they were all in for it. They just didn't want a monument there, but they all agreed that a flag from the light down going up would have been okay, so. But it's close to 200 acres. As a matter of fact, Vice Mayor Hume and I went to the county at that time and informed them of what we were doing, even though that's not county land, but out of respect, we went, and the county approved it. And we have, Donna Toly has offered to give us $10,000 once we break ground, so, you know, the county is on board on doing this also. And it's not only an Elk Grove, it's the Elk Grove Regional Veterans Memorial, so.
Well, Oscar, if you need any help, you know, there when we had the actual opening ceremony back in, I think it was 2011?
Yes.
And I'd be willing to more than help any way I can.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Oscar, thank you for, I won't call it resurrecting this, but breathing some life into it and sort of starting that journey of 1,000 miles with the first step and breaking it into a manageable first phase so that we can get started and hopefully build some momentum off of that, and so I want to thank you for your service first and foremost, but also for shepherding the recognition that our veterans deserve.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Oscar, I just want to echo the sentiments and just thank you for your continued work on this project, so I look forward to coming out there when it's finished.
Thank you.
It's such a good timing. We have such a strong veteran community in Elk Grove, and I'm glad you're bringing it back, so, you know, whatever you need help, just let us know.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next presentation.
Take us to Item 4.3, the Youth Commission's biannual update.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Carrie Byerline, Executive Administrative Assistant to our new city manager and advisor for the Elk Grove Youth Commission. We are only halfway through our time with this current commission, but have already planned and executed so much. The commissioners will share their completed and future plans in their biannual presentation. I'd like to thank all the commissioners for their efforts thus far, and a big thank you to Matthew for putting together the PowerPoint for tonight's presentation. I'll turn it over to our Chair Natalia, who will start the introductions. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Natalia Romero. I'm the Chair of the Youth Commission, and this is my second year on the commission. And the rest are going to go down the line and introduce themselves.
My name is Penit Chahal. I'm the historian of the Youth Commission, and this is my first year.
Hi, my name is Mide. This is my first year on the Youth Commission, and I'm Communications Officer.
Hi, my name is Marion Simana, and this is my fourth year on the Youth Commission, and I'm the secretary.
Hi, my name's Tony Wong, and this is my first year here, and I'm just a commissioner.
Hi, my name is Adam Davis, and this is my first year on the Youth Commission.
Hi, I'm Tessa Gonzalez. This is my second year on Youth Commission. Hi, I'm Tessa Gonzalez. This is my second year on Youth Commission, and I'm the Vice Chair.
Hello, I'm Shay, and this is my first year on the Youth Commission.
Hello, I'm Matthew, and this is my one and a half year in the Youth Commission.
Good evening. My name is Madeline Bagwell, or better known as Laney. This is my third year on the commission.
What is Youth Commission?
So you guys may be wondering, what is Youth Commission? The Youth Commission serves to represent the interests of teens, host events catering to teens, and to attend to the needs of the teens within the city of Elk Grove.
So far, as a Youth Commission, we have held our summer retreat, as well as Party on the Palms, the Teen Forum with the CSD Teen Action Committee, and the Stronger Together event.
And this year, we have five new Youth Commissioners. First one's Peni. She's from Pleasant Grove. And then Meade from La Druna Creek, Adam from La Druna Creek 2, and then Shay from Franklin, and me from Elk Grove.
So on August 15th, we had our summer retreat, and so we started off the day with icebreakers. We learned about the Code of Ethics, and the Brown Act, and the duties of a Youth Commissioner.
On September 8th, we had our third annual Party on the Palms, event where teens from all over the community came together and had fun and met new friends. And we had a great turnout, and hopefully, next year, it'll become something bigger.
So on November 4th, the Youth Commission and Teen Action Committee held the Teen Forum with aims of helping teens engage in civil duty, civic duty. Over nachos and popcorn, and in small groups, we explored the desires of Elk Grove teens, and also discussed future events.
Another event we had this year was the Stronger Together event. We actually got to put it on this year, and this is our first time putting it on after it was unfortunately canceled last year. It was on November 10th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And at the event, we discussed teen issues, stress, and relationships, depression, and suicide. And we also had the special guest of JJ's Hello Foundation tell us about their amazing foundation. In the, there's a picture on the side that says negative or positive. That's a picture of one of the activities we did at the event, where we had the people who were at the event, right, something negative they've heard about themselves, and then turned it into something positive. Thank you.
Before I present to you about our food drive, I just want to say on behalf of all the Youth Commission, that Laney actually spoke at the Stronger Together event, and she was one of our guest speakers. And we're all really proud of her for speaking at the event, because it takes a lot to put yourself out there. So, good job, Laney. All right. One of our upcoming events on February 12th is going to be a food drive, and the theme is Love Your Community, because it happens to fall during the week of Valentine's Day. And we believe in the winter, that's where the need for food is the greatest. So people have a chance to come to the council chambers and donate canned goods, and write notes to those who the goods are going to, and they'll prob, and we'll have something like hot chocolate or cookies waiting for them as a reward.
Okay. On the 19th of this month, we'll be having our fourth Shape Your Future event. This is an event where teens can come and learn applicable life skills, as well as resume building, balancing budgets, and some skills needed for college preparation.
Coming up later this year, we're going to continue on with our Carnival Fun Day, which is the second time we're doing this, because last year was wildly successful, and we want to be able to provide this event for the community. We will have carnival-style games for kids, food trucks, face painting, and a photo booth for the entire family to enjoy. And there'll be also prizes available for the kids to win. So we'd love to see the community out there.
And that's the end of our presentation. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question on your canned food drive that you're going to do. Is there an electronic flyer that's going to go out on that?
Yes, there will be.
Because I...
We just decided this last night, so...
Okay. So if you can get, if you can get that electronic flyer to all the council members, we can help boost that to get the word out, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly. You guys are awesome.
Councilman Sue?
Yeah. Yeah, I love the work that you guys are doing on here, too, all the slide shows highlighting all these events. I wanted to ask, actually, Carrie, has, I just noticed a lot more things that might be resonating with the youth at large within the city. Are you able to tell whether or not folks or the kids throughout the high schools are starting to understand that we have a Youth Commission and the role they play?
I think so. The more kids we have coming through... My favorite part. The more kids that we have coming through the Youth Commission, I feel like their outreach is getting better, and they're able to kind of spread the word through the kids at their schools. We also have Instagram now, and so we're kind of trying to get a little social media besides the cities.
Great. Glad to hear. Thank you.
Are we able to leverage the school district? I know we have a new contact over there.
We do have a youth contact now.
And is she working better with us than in the past to get the word out to all the high schools and middle schools?
So on our event, Shape Your Future, within, I think, a week and a half, we already maxed out all of our RSVPs. So we've actually had to close registration, because, like, super fast, it got filled up. So we're really proud of that, and I think the word's getting out.
Excellent.
Just a little bit of feedback from a household with two teenagers. All the events are resonating, and, you know, certainly my two boys are hearing about it. So I think that you guys are doing an excellent job. Yeah, keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, next presentation.
Take us to item 4.4, the new hire introductions.
That's true. And I will happily defer to my boss. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce you and the community to our newest Police Department employees. As you can see, we've hired quite a few over the last few months. So in the interest of time, I'll be relatively brief. I would like to start, we have a few employees behind me that we're recognizing for promotions tonight as well. I'm going to start with Roland Fields. Roland's right behind me. Actually, he's tall enough, you can probably see him right over my head. Just a little bit about Roland. He started with us in June of 2016 as a dispatcher, went on to work as a records technician. Most recently, he was promoted into our new customer service supervisor position at the new animal shelter. So we've started hiring some of those positions, as you know, and we're really happy to get Roland in that position, because he's got a very strong customer service orientation and experience. It's going to bring a lot of value, I think, to that position. So that's Roland. Lindsay Gosh here. Okay. I'm just going to mention Sergeant Lindsay Gosh. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She was hired with us in September of 2011, had previous experience at Sacramento Police Department as an officer before she came here. Then she worked with us as a patrol officer, did a stint as a field training officer, most recently, a detective. And I was very happy and proud to promote her to sergeant effective December 23rd of 2018. And the last, but certainly not least, recently promoted person I'd like to introduce you to is Lieutenant Mike Press there on the end. You probably know Mike. Mike's been a familiar face. He's been with us since August of 2006. Mike's got a very extensive resume, police officer, sergeant, pop sergeant, SWAT team member, supervisor, commander, and most recently, again, very happy and proud to promote Mike to lieutenant, and he's serving as a watch commander now, and that took effect in December 23rd as well. So those are our, those are our promotees. I'm going to jump really quickly into, to introduce you to our new employees. I'm going to start with Cody Nguyen.
Where's Cody?
Cody's right here, behind me as well. Cody started with us in October of 2018. He's a community service officer. We've talked about that before. CSOs do a lot of work in our organization. They do drive marked vehicles. They respond to traffic accidents. They take theft reports. They do a lot of work. And Cody actually went to high school here in the Elk Grove Unified School District. He was also one of our police explorers for a few years before he hired on as a CSO. So that was, that was nice to see him graduate from the Explorer Program. Next up is Michael Hildebrandt. There's Michael. Michael is an animal service officer with the department. He also started on October 28th with Cody of 2018. Michael, Michael has a professional history working with animals, and so Michael really has a love for animals, and I think that's going to, that's going to really, you know, help, not just in his job, but help the organization, especially as we expand into opening our own animal shelter. So we're very happy to have Michael on board. Next up, and this officer's not able to be here tonight either, his name is Tim Huppert. Tim is a police recruit. We hired him in November of 2018. Tim's currently in the Police Academy. So we hired him, and we're sponsoring him through an academy that just started. So we'll see Tim back in about six months after he, after he learns the trade. One neat thing about Tim I'd like to mention, and we'll probably bring him back upon his completion of the academy, but he is a, he is a veteran and served in the Army in Afghanistan. Next up is Yusuf Karimi. There's Yusuf. Yusuf is a police officer. He started with us in November of 2018. He also attended high school in the Elk Grove Unified School District, attended Sacramento Sheriff's Department Academy. Neat fact about Yusuf is he's fluent in three languages, English, Farsi, and Urdu, which is, which is very unique. And we're happy to have Yusuf on board. Pauline Kozicki is next up. There she is. Pauline is a dispatcher. We've talked about that before. The dispatchers are the ones that when, you know, when people call, because they're having an issue, and it's generally not to tell us what a great day they're having, they'll call, and people like Pauline answer the phone and triage that call and get them connected with the resources they need. Prior to joining our department, she worked for Sutter Hospital and spent about five-plus years handling claims. And so she's probably got a lot of multitasking skills, I imagine, that are going to help her in dispatch quite a bit. So we're happy to have Pauline on board. Next up is Sylvia Valencia. There's Sylvia. Sylvia's a police officer as well. She started with us November 21st of this year. Sylvia was actually born and raised in Mexico, came to the United States as a teenager, went on to earn a bachelor's degree from Sacramento State University, worked for Solano County Sheriff's for a few years as a sheriff's security officer, and then recently graduated from the Los Rios Police Academy. So we're happy to have Sylvia as part of the team. And next to Sylvia is Connie Lee. There she is. Connie also, Connie started with us November 26th of 2018, graduated from the academy with Sylvia. Connie, too, attended Sac State and has a bachelor's degree from there. And we're happy to have Connie on the team as well. Brittany Estep is our next employee. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She's a records technician. She started in November of 2018, also a local high school graduate, and she was another person that we, that we acquired from our finance department. We've had a few records folks over the years that have made the move. We're happy to have Brittany on the team as well. Next up, Ken Welter. There's Ken. Ken is a police officer. He started with us December 10th of this year. Ken's a Marine Corps veteran, Sac State graduate. He came to us as a lateral police officer. Ken's got about six years' experience at Stockton Police Department, then he went to Vacaville Police Department, spent about six years there, and now we're happy to have lured Ken away from Vacaville. Next to Ken is Greg Iser. Greg started the same day as Ken, also came from Vacaville. So we got a package deal on this one, and we hired both Ken and Greg away from Vacaville PD, much to our joy. Greg also has a bachelor's degree, and he's been in law enforcement for about 16 years. And so he brings great experience. We're happy to have Greg on the team. And last, but certainly not least, is Musa Abidrabo. Where's Musa?
Right, sir.
There's Musa, thank you. Musa is also a police officer. He started with us on December 24th, so just a couple of weeks back. Musa has a bachelor's degree, also moved, has completed school, high school in Elk Grove, began his career with the Twin Rivers Police Department, then he went to Hayward, the City of Hayward Police Department, where he worked as a hostage negotiator, and school resource officer, and some other jobs. So we're very happy to have Musa on the team. And with that, I think I'm done. That's my group for tonight. Thank you for the time.
Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Hey, Chief. Chief. Chief, I've got a quick question. Are any of these candidates ones that were sponsored by the department, are any of the new hires sponsored by the department?
Through the academy?
Yeah.
Well, we have the one I mentioned, Tim Huppert, and I think we hired, we did hire a couple of the officers that recently graduated from Los Rios toward the end of their academy term, but not fully sponsored. Officer Huppert would be the one that we're fully sponsoring.
Awesome. Yeah, great. Thank you. All right, next item.
I think we still have some new hires to introduce.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My pleasure to introduce three new public works employees and one promotion. First, let me start with Brandon Smith. He's a facilities technician. He is going to help us maintain our buildings. He comes to us from the city of Lodi, where he did that same position for the past eight years, including working at the Lodi Animal Shelter. So he's going to put that experience to good use here in the near future. He started actually on December 10th. There's Carlos Duque. He's manager of our Special Waste Collection Center. He might look familiar. He actually was there when the center opened as an employee of Clean Harbors. He has actually 14 years of experience in hazardous waste fields, including working for the Environmental Protection Agency. Next is Kristen Parsons. She's a senior civil engineer. Her first day was December 4th. She's working in our capital division, delivering projects. She actually has 25 years of experience in both public and private sector engineering. And prior to coming to the city, she worked for Will Dade as a senior project manager. And last but not least, is our single promotion, is Jeff Warner. I'm sure you've seen him before. Jeff is promoted to the Engineering Services Manager position. He started on November 13th. He's going to be overseeing traffic engineering, drainage engineering, encroachment permits, and the construction management of capital projects. He has 15 years of experience, and he actually started with the city as a student intern working for InterWest in 2005.
Wow.
So he has worked his way up. I think that's a lot of testament to his hard work and his intelligence. So congratulations to Jeff. All right? Is that? Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Counsel?
All right. I'd like to introduce Ezraleen Rose Walker.
Hello.
Hi. She's joining the city manager's team. She's our new front desk customer service specialist across the street. She comes to us with over nine years of strong customer service experience. The last five years, she worked as CSD Customer Service Representative over at the Wacford Community Center. She has just recently received her bachelor's degree from Sac State with a degree in criminal justice. Welcome, Ezraleen.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
So, Jason, so Jason, is that another one we're going to lose from 8401 to come over here to the site?
We're on to you. We're on to you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Any new hires? Is that it? Okay. Let's move to the next item.
That'll take us to section five, public comment.
Public comment. First speaker is Alvin Chung. Dr. Chung, come on up.
Well, good evening, and a Happy New Year to all, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members, and the newly appointed city manager and police chief. It's my great honor here to share with you some of the public comments that I have. I am Dr. Alvin Chung, the president and CEO of the California and Off State University. And I realize that we are not on the agenda tonight, but I would like to say a few words about our plans to build a teaching hospital adjacent to the campus in Elk Grove. First, we are in the very early stages of this project. First, we are in the very early stages of this project, which we announced on December 20th. And we are looking forward to input from many people and organizations as we go forward. Next, we are taking concrete steps to reach out to and work with business community, neighborhood leaders, and local organizations, as well as our ongoing work with the city. I want to be very clear about our commitment. We have a process established to work with each and every business tenant immediately impacted by the project. And we are meeting with them almost daily since our announcement. And then we are also in the process of handing out a information flyers to help them to recognize, you know, how to reach out to us in case they have questions. And at the same time, we are exploring options with each and every one of them to create a win-win situation. And next, we have scheduled a info sessions on January 15th with local neighborhood leaders to hear about their concerns and ideas. And this is not a one-off, but rather the beginning of an ongoing communication process and reach out to our community that we are part of. And now, let me say something about the medical center. The California North State University Medical Center would be a state-of-the-art teaching hospital. Teaching hospitals are special places where medicine professors and specialists, who are at the top of their field, and then it will deliver the high-quality care while educating future generations of physicians. And many of home, most likely, may be members of this community. And then we're gonna practice here in the city of Elk Grove and deliver care to this community. The medical center will also be eventually, after the long process, will be a level-two trauma centers. So with that, I'd like to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to address members of the council. Thank you. Yes?
Where, where do you plan on having the public outreach meeting at?
We are actually working with members of the city. And then most likely, that will have it either at the university event center or other venues that suggested to us. We like to make it convenient for members of the community to have the sessions, either on the university premise or other designated locations that is best, you know, to communicate with members.
So if you can make sure that you get that date, time, and address to all of us? So that way we can make sure we get that blasted out as well?
Absolutely. Thank you for the suggestions and advice.
And Dr. Chung, I'd like to add to that. I would encourage you to reach out to the Stone Lake Homeware Association because they're the closest affected.
Right, that is part of the plan, thank you. That is part of our plan, yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna, thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn is Boyce Jeffries. Ms. Wheat, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening. I provided you with pictures beforehand of what I'm gonna speak to. This location is over on East Stockton Boulevard. And as you can see, I think it belongs to Mr. Motorhome. So he put in a really nice fence along the front edge road. But behind it is a, a fence with razor wire. And so I think that that's very unattractive. And so I went to the zoning code to see if that would be allowed. And under our zoning code, it says if something's close to homes, that it wouldn't be allowed, that it would require a minor design review. So I'm not sure if this went to the zoning administrator or if the development director made the change in allowance for this. But when we're trying to really be a stronger neighborhood, we're trying to bring businesses to our town, I don't see razor wire on a pretty busy street as very business-friendly or neighborhood-friendly or giving the feeling of being in a safe area. With the new hotel being built there, I imagine some will be coming off of the, off of Elk Grove Boulevard and turning down there and going behind big lots. And we'll be driving right by that. I don't know that that's gonna give anybody a sense of security here in Elk Grove. So I hope that that could be taken a look at and that maybe if indeed he needs some security there, that maybe he could have some cameras or another alternative instead of razor wire. And again, I guess there was a minor design review done and this was allowed and didn't go before Planning Commission. I can't imagine that Planning Commission would think that this was great for our city. But I'm sure that you can take a look at it and maybe we can get something better. Thank you.
Ms. Wheat, I believe you're working with Mr. Wilson, right? You guys are communicating? I would suggest that.
Yes, I will work with Ms. Wheat and will have code enforcement and planning look into the situation.
Okay, excellent. Boyce Jeffries. Following Boyce is Amrit Sandhu.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. If you recall, last year, a couple of months ago, I was here regarding a survey, our petition, everything. Well, I did get a response from staff. I appreciate that. But the way it was stated is, there is no definition of a voting survey in the Elk Grove Municipal Code. And the past practice has been to collect this information through a petition submitted by the parties requesting permit parking. The city may interpret its own code. Is that true legal counsel? What? Well, you're a legal counsel, okay. So we use words indifferently, survey, petition, apple, orange. I do, for the record, I do have definitions for survey and petition that you may want to consider when you revise that ordinance, which needs to be done in that respect. Then, I'll leave that with the friend over here. Then the city has no record response to your request, number one, copy of a PPZ tracking log for mini-circle. That's from staff. The day of the meeting, I get a tracking log. It suddenly appeared. Is it a fake? Fake news? I don't know. Well, the problem with this one, it was done not correctly. Because on this one, it doesn't say what permit goes to each vehicle like the tracking log on their, their Nardal Way. If you look at this one, it says what permit number goes to which car. So the police have no idea what permit is to go with each car. Okay, so then I go like this. Thanks for the parking permits, but it does not include which permit goes to each vehicle. If you could just email me which sticker you put on which car, I would be greatly appreciated. I'm not doing his job, her job. It should have been done from the get-go. Again, you need to rescind this ordinance and do it correctly. Okay, every vehicle which has a sticker has it placed on the driver's side front window. Maybe address that when the ordinance is revised because it all, it states in the order, the permit shall be displayed on the vehicle as directed by the director or designee. Well then, I get the response, thank you for your comment. If we decide to modify the ordinance, there's no question, it needs to be modified. There is no question. But staff gives me an answer like that? That's ludicrous. That is not very much customer service-oriented. And Jason, is this the way your troops work? You know? I mean, jeez Louise. No, I mean, just do me a favor. Rescind the ordinance, pull those signs, okay? And do it correctly. I will sit down with staff and help draft it for you. I said this back in July.
Please wrap it up.
I said back in July to revise it. So what are you, what action do I need to do to get this done right and correct?
Your time is up, sir.
I'm waiting for an answer.
We don't need to give you an answer. We'll consider it.
Consider what, on the agenda?
This is not a conversation. You make your statement and then we'll decide whether we want to pursue it.
Then I, I need to go elsewhere then, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Amrit Sandhu. Our next speaker is Amrit Sandhu. Following Amrit is Carl Gordon.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'd like to relay my concern regarding the proposed site for this Cal State Level Two Trauma Hospital in Stone Lake. I've been a resident of Elk Grove for over 20 years and I've lived in the Sacramento area for pretty much my whole life, 45 years. I moved to the Sheldon area looking for a quiet neighborhood after, to raise my children in. And it was great for a while, but we had to move from there due to the daily helicopters circling the neighborhood, the increased traffic noise and safety concerns. We wanted to stay in Elk Grove because this was our city. And so we moved over to the Stone Lake neighborhood looking for respite from helicopters, traffic, noise, and increased safety. The building of this hospital, I feel, is gonna disrupt my quiet neighborhood. I walk out to my car in the morning, I can hear birds and cows. That will not be able to happen with the proposed hospital. As a healthcare provider and a homeowner, I adamantly oppose this. I don't feel that, that Stone Lake is an appropriate area, a residential area with high-end homes for a level-two trauma, eventual level-two trauma hospital. I've worked in, for several healthcare organizations, including one of the largest ones in Northern California. I know what it's like to work in a trauma center. I know what it's like when the police put us on lockdown because a shooting victim has come in. And I don't feel that's appropriate for my family in the Stone Lake neighborhood. And I believe a lot of my labor, neighbors are here to agree with me. I would like to see that this be more transparent. A lot of my neighbors and myself are blindsided by the announcement on the 20th of December and had no idea that there was a public forum that the university was putting on for business owners and residents on January 15th. That's news to me. We literally had no idea what was happening until we saw the announcement made by the mayor. I feel that that's gonna negatively impact our neighborhood. There should, will be more police presence, which isn't always positive because they're gonna be there for the trauma victims, shooting victims and whatnot, just like they are in South Sacramento and around UC Davis as well. There needs to be thorough input from the public as well as other current emergency departments. Are they having issues with flow? Are they not able to meet the needs? I've been in and out of the Kaiser Emergency Room in 45 minutes for a child's broken arm, a child's broken leg. My kids play sports and they hurt themselves all the time. Never have had to been, be there for a long amount of time. So I just want to make sure that the city is moving forward in a transparent manner. It doesn't feel like it's been very transparent. Speaking to the neighbors, speaking to business owners, no one knows what's going on. And we have not been notified as a neighborhood. I took it to my HOA as well. So thank you. Just looking for consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Carl Gordon. Mr. Gordon, come on down. On Carl is Ernest Seewell.
Thank you for your time. I'm a tree hugger. You've got the trees in the, in the city seal. I love Elk Grove. I walk my dog through Folks Park and Meawak Park every day. And there are majestic oak there that are being trashed by squirrels. I've complained to animal control, I've complained to CSD numerous times. The squirrels are destroying the park and they're killing the trees. Several of these mad big oaks have been killed in the last several years because the squirrels burrow in underneath them, they nest, they gnaw at the roots, and disease sets in and kills the tree from the inside out. So I just came here to ask, please do something to save these trees. That's all I want.
Okay.
You know, CSD Park Service, they seem to not care about, I brought a number of pictures with me, a whole bunch of photographs.
We, we have them up here, I've just passed them down, thank you.
I would really like it if you could save these trees. And, and you know, just instruct them to, to kill the squirrels, squirrel abatement, and give the trees some tender loving care, please. That's all I want.
So that's under CSD's jurisdiction, but we will circle back with CSD?
I'm sorry, sir, I'm a little hard.
It's under CSD's jurisdiction, but we'll circle back with CSD since they're our partners in the city.
I'm sorry, I said, but you've heard me and I thank you for your time. You got it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Ernest Seewell? Come on up.
And Mr. Seewell submitted a PowerPoint presentation, which he did so within our policy for receiving that within 24 hours. So I'll pull that up as well.
Good evening, I'm Ernest Sewell. I'm a resident of Elk Grove and a homeowner. The purpose of this PowerPoint demonstration, please watch the monitors, is the effects of 4 and 5G on skin absorption rate level as related to signal strength. 4 and 5G can violate FCC safety standards. Two research papers out of Georgia Southwestern by Dr. Kim, a PhD educated. Publishers in journals, has three US patents, seven Korean patents, and has worked in this field for a long time. Dr. Kim found the problems, identifies the cause of it, found the solution to the problem. Published, is seen in the next two papers. Mitigation of Human Exposure to the Down Leak of 5G, January 20th, 2018. The graphs show on the left side of the red line is a safety zone. Anything to the right is wrong or over-exposure. Typical cell site, four cell sites, you only really need one to keep it within the safety limits of the power density and the SAR levels. Mitigation of EMF exposure, again, Dr. Kim, October 24th, 2018. Following graphs show the comparison between 4 and 5G and 3.9. The scale's hard to read, left side, power density. FCC's limit 10. Blue line, 5G, yellow, 4, 3.9, red. The safety line is down at the bottom of the graph. As you can see, at about 55 meters is where you would start enter the safety zone. Here's one for the SAR. No FCC guidelines. The guidelines for that start at 6 gigahertz and go down. Here again, another graph with a SAR showing the blue line is 5G. 4 is yellow and 3 is red. 55 meters is 180 feet away from the cell site to get into the safety zone. Nearly 70% of the users are exposed to higher levels. This is what goes into it, 47 different body parts. Your blood, your bladder, your bones, your cerebrum. And we get on to colons and eyes, heart, kidneys, lungs, liver, muscles, et cetera. These are the values that go into it, dry skin, wet skin. Your skull, your brain, your muscle. This is what goes into the calculations. Now think about the, the high levels of EMF within 55 meters, 180 feet from some of the cell sites for your firefighters, your police, your maintenance workers, et cetera. Now think about the residents, the visitors, the workers, the children that will be exposed to these high levels 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for weeks or years. Who's going to pay us for the depreciation or our property value if you stick this stuff right outside our house? Everyone will be exposed to the EMF fields, whether they're cellular user or not, if they're in the coverage area of these cell sites. So according to your consultant here a few weeks ago, the FCC is supposed to have new guidelines out in January. I suggest to the council that you wait until January until we get some new safety guidelines before you approve 5G in Elk Grove. Otherwise, you're putting the city at a liability risk for the exposure to the first responders and, and other maintenance workers you have, not to mention what you're doing to the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mark Graham.
And Mr. Graham also submitted a PowerPoint presentation and that was also in accordance with our policy.
It belongs within three minutes, Mr. Graham.
Kind of drive over here and pull that up. Kind of drive over here and pull that up.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham, I live in Elk Grove. You know, it's kind of a stretch because I've got to be able to operate this thing. When AT&amp;T and Verizon were here at the community workshop, what they did not tell you is that their own insurance documents have exclusions. The most important word in any insurance policy is the word exclusion. And so they say, what, what, what is excluded from this insurance coverage? Well, certain injuries, certain loss or harm that might occur from pollutants. Well, what is a pollutant? And in both cases, their insurance documents, there's a long list of items that they say are pollutants. And these include, here's the document from Verizon. And these, these are talking about coverage for Verizon customers, not Verizon employees. This is the page, and I emailed this to the council. But there's the definition of pollutants, and I've underlined the items that are coming off of their cell antennas, whether it's four G or five G. I'm not going to read it because you see it right in front of you. There it is, right in the words of Verizon. Their own product is a pollutant. Here's a comparable cover, insurance policy document from AT&amp;T. Once again, it's for AT&amp;T customers, not employees. They have a list of exclusions, which include pollutants. And there, at the bottom, the long paragraph is what AT&amp;T defines as a pollutant. And the underlying terms are the ones to be concerned about. So, police protect us from these things. Now, on December tenth, I sent the council an email, I resent it this week, and it was five additional recommendations that I think should be added when the city makes your new policy on cell antennas. I just want to say one thing about the process. It's, you know, this is a complicated issue and, and the, I, I think about it as comparable to buying a house, or no, to building a house. You buy a piece of land, you hire an architect and a builder, a general contractor, and you want to have a house, right? For you and your family. Now, there are going to be lots of changes because there are going to be lots of details and lots of things you didn't think of the first time around. And so far, we've had one community workshop, which was wonderful, and the council gave some direction to the staff, which was all good. But these, these items in my December tenth email were simply not mentioned. And I don't see how the council expects to get everything in, you know, one community workshop or one community workshop plus one follow-up meeting. You, you wouldn't try and do that for a house. Next thing, December twenty-first, I sent the council an email and I provided information about that, that having a cell antenna near a house will lower the value of that house. And the reason is this, the challenge before the council is not only to make a cell antenna policy that protects the city's interests and the residents' interests, but to do so in a way that these companies will not sue this city. And believe me, they will, because that's the way they roll. The courts have said that, that the city can deny us a permit, let's say, for a cell antenna application, an application for a permit, if there's substantial evidence in the written record, and it cannot be on the basis of environmental effects. So what, what I sent the council on December twenty-first was substantial evidence in the written record simply to back up the argument that a cell antenna will lower the value of the house that it, that it's in front of or near. There were eleven attachments. I encouraged the staff and the council to, to read those over. That's why I provided, I was doing the city a favor so that the city-
Please wrap it up, Mr. Graham.
Will not get sued, yes. And I, I, I'm glad that, that you made, Mr. Berman, the city manager. I think you made the right decision. I've had two meetings with Mr. Berman, August ninth and November twenty-sixth or something like that. I found him to be a straight shooter. When he said he's going to serve with integrity, that matches my experience with Mr. Berman. He's very smart, I'm sure you figure that out. And he's a straight shooter. And I think, given the right opportunity and the right information, he will come up, he and his staff will come up with a good cell antenna policy for this city that, that will protect the city's interests and residents' interests. And the last thing I want to say is, as I listen to the police department promotions, it reminded me that I, I feel safer in Elk Grove than I do in Sacramento. And I'm not just talking about safer from the criminals and the thugs. I feel safer from the police than I do. I have faith in the police in Elk Grove, and I cannot say that for the police in Sacramento. And that's because of the stuff that we see in the headlines once in a while. I won't go into that, but I think you know what I'm talking about. So, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Melinda Robinson. Following Melinda is Elizabeth Brown.
Good evening. My name is Melinda Robinson. I am here to address and note my objection to the trauma center that is proposed for Elk Grove. I live a mile from this site. This is a residential community. There are small, local, and some chain businesses, but this is a very quiet area in Elk Grove. I'm extremely concerned with the amount of noise, traffic, and congestion, and the overall imprint that this facility will have on this area. It would seem to me that there are several areas around Elk Grove that could be more appropriate for such a facility. If you look at the surrounding neighborhoods for the area where UC Davis Medical Center is located, both the violent and property crime rates are sixty percent higher than where we currently live and where this medical center is slated. I can't state with a hundred percent certainty that the difference is the impact of UC Davis, but you cannot ignore the fact that homes in that area have a security gate surrounding their properties and bars on their windows. I moved here from San Francisco twenty years ago, and one of the things I instantly noticed about the Elk Grove area was an absence of small businesses. It seems that every corner and strip mall have the same cluster of the same types of stores and same, same shops and businesses. This project will display several small businesses that chose this area to invest their time and money to serve our community. While I understand that the city has a vision for the future of Elk Grove, I think that a successful, inclusive, community-based city should promote and protect our small business owners. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Elizabeth Brown? Come on up. Following Elizabeth Brown is Hazel Santos.
Thank you, good evening. My husband and I are the owners of Dreaming Dog Brewery, and we would be displaced by the upcoming hospital. We have lived on the west side of Elk Grove for twenty-five years. And when we decided to open our brewery, we did five years of research, and we wanted to be on the west side because we live on the west side. It took a long time, five years of our own planning, lots of permits. It took CSD three months to approve our building permit. The city was really excellent to work with, they only took two weeks. For us to move a brewery requires eight hundred amps of power. It requires a roll-up door. We have a patio that is well-served and used by our community. And it took eight months for the TTB, which is our federal liquor license, to approve our license. And they need our architect's diagrams ahead of time. And with the federal government being shut down, I don't know how long that would take. And a regular time, it took eight months. So you're talking a two-year, for someone to move and take care of us is a two-year process minimum. I would like to acknowledge the Dreaming Dog patrons that have come out here to support us. We put our heart and soul into this business. This is our retirement. We built, we finished the floors, we built the barn doors, the bar. We put the furniture together, we finished the floors, we did everything ourselves. And Dr. Chung said he has been in constant contact. We have had one point of contact, and that was initiated by us through our attorney from the university. We have heard nothing. We didn't know about the public meetings, they have not discussed anything with any of the business owners that I know of, including us. So, in the end, I will say that I, as a small business owner, feel completely betrayed by the city of Elk Grove. That I trusted you to watch out for us. I believe that the city encouraged and wanted small businesses. But you have said that is okay until a bigger business with more money and more tax revenue comes in, and then we'll just find a place for you. There isn't a place for us. So I just want you to know that in the end, if Dreaming Dog Brewery goes down and goes out of business, I will look back at my time in Elk Grove with sadness instead of joy and regret instead of fulfillment. But I will be able to sleep at night and look at myself in the mirror, knowing that I never lied to people and I never betrayed their trust. And I gave my all for the business and the west side of Elk Grove. And I am not sure you can do the same. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hazel Santos. Following Hazel is Barbara Patterson.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking our Elk Grove Police Department and our Leos for their service and sacrifice on this law enforcement day. My family and I appreciate all of you for your hard work and your sacrifice. I am here to address the hospital that's being built in my quiet neighborhood of Stone Lake. I oppose this hospital being built in my backyard. I moved here from the city of Richmond in the Bay Area and chose to live in the quiet neighborhood of Stone Lake since two thousand and one because it was a family-friendly area. It had a great elementary school for any future children I was going to have and now have, and that it was near a reserve so that nothing was supposedly going to be built by our neighborhood. When I heard about this hospital being built literally right down the street, I was angry because it was very sneaky how its own residents of Elk Grove or our own Stone Lake community had no idea this hospital was being considered. There was nothing mentioned during Mayor Lee's campaign about a hospital being built in the Stone Lake area until he was confirmed mayor. I work in downtown and seen what having a hospital in a residential area can do. We, the employees, have emails about being good neighbors because people go out to smoke and leave their cigarette butts or garbage in their properties. It's not just the employees, but it's also patients. The traffic flow is high, and people speed right through the, the neighborhoods, I've seen it. Also, the parking, people park in all of the areas of the neighborhoods around the UC Davis area. I am also saddened that after so many years, we finally have amazing restaurants and businesses in that area, such as the Dreaming Dog Brewery, the Stone Lake Nails Shop, Miabi, the India Kitchen, the Hiti. I am saddened that these hard-working owners are going to lose out on their businesses, that they worked so hard on investing here in Elk Grove and making it prosper to be demolished for this hospital. I am worried about all of these issues that will come about if this goes through. For the first time in eighteen years, I am actually itching to move if this hospital will be built. I want to have property that have the same quiet, family-friendly atmosphere that my beloved Stone Lake community possesses. It sickens me that I live in a city where something this important was not presented to the very people they represent. It is very scheming of politicians who represent us to keep us in the dark. So shame on you.
Our next speaker is Barbara Patterson. Barbara Patterson? Following Barbara is Paul Waxstaff.
I'm old, I'm here.
I see you.
I'm slow, sorry. I'm here, as you can see, to let this council know that as a homeowner in Elk Grove, I am adamantly against putting a hospital on West Terran. If the mayor of this city really had our best interests at heart, he would be steering these types of businesses to the eye sore, uh, sore, eyesore area of the abandoned building skeletons at ninety-nine and Grant Line. This monstrosity of a building would be less offensive there. There are other vacant lots available with better access that should be considered, ones that won't ruin property values and disrupt so many lives. Whoever envisioned that proposed building for the Stone Lake West Laguna region had obviously never visited our communities or, as I suspect, just doesn't care about what is better or best for Elk Grove property values. They are only thinking about their own bottom line and/or campaign contributions. And as Dr. Chung doesn't even have the respect for us to stay and listen to what we have to say, it speaks volumes to how much he wants to work with our community. There are two other hospitals that I understand are being built in the Elk Grove area. We don't need this hospital. I find it interesting that this proposition was never made public until after the contributions were made to the mayor's candidacy and completed election. The owners of the hospital are saying that they hope to break ground this year. It is obvious to everyone here that the process is much further along than we have been made aware of. Seems very underhanded and sneaky. But more importantly, it is a severe adverse effect that a hospital there will have on the residents and safety of the people. We currently have minimal policing in our area because it is always relatively safe. That will change drastically. The cost will be great to the city. The traffic and noise will be unbearable. The idea of widening the streets in the Stone Lake community is totally unacceptable. I hope that the council and the planning commission will do the right thing and not approve this project.
Our next speaker is Paul Waxstaff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Maybe it's good to look back on how this meeting started. Jason Berman, congratulations on your appointment as city mayor. To quote the city manager at his first meeting as city manager, Elk Grove is an amazing city. I don't know how many cities give their citizens the opportunity to be able to voice their comments this early in the process to the city council. But it's so nice to be able to do that. And believe me, Dr. Chung did not leave out of disrespect. Instead, he asked that I remain here, take notes, and listen to our citizens, and we have.
I'm sorry, Paul. If you want to speak, sign the card. Otherwise, please allow Mr. Waxstaff to speak.
What I've noted today is Ms. Sandhu talking about helicopters, traffic, noise, and increased safety. That Ms. Robinson talking about crime rates and small businesses. Ms. Brown talking about a timeframe of two years to be able to set up her business, Dreaming Dog, which is truly an amazing thing for them to have done at this point in their lives. Our point right now is that we believe that this early in the process, and I would, again, like to mention to the city council and remind the mayor and the city that the application to begin this process was the day before the press conference on December twentieth. And now we are at the very beginning of this process, and we too would like the city to consider all of these points. We will consider it because we believe that the hospital should be done in a manner that will consider the points raised by these wonderful citizens and prevent them from being blindsided because it is so early in the process. Our plan is to have forums, we discussed that already. Again, not to do a he said, she said with Ms. Brown, but she knows there has been a point of contact. In fact, on the very day of the press conference, I met with the Browns from the university. And there has been a conversation with her attorney. I agree with that. That process is beginning and it's getting started. We've talked to a number of the Stone Lake tenants already. We have a plan in place to consider what all of they, what all of their needs are. Take all of those needs into consideration. Try to have them be able to stay on the property if that's available. But also work with them in, in trying to give them a Stone Lake happy landing if that's possible. Finally, I, I think the most important thing to mention here is respect for the homeowners in the city in which they've chosen to live. At the same time, decreasing the distance from a hospital from twenty minutes to five minutes for a person undergoing a heart attack or a stroke can be a lifesaver, and it can better their lives once those lives are saved. We want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we go through this process. My gratitude to the city council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waxstaff. Our next speaker is Constance Connolly. Following Constance is Randy Becker.
Good evening. I'm going to switch subjects a little bit. I live on Sheldon Road, off of Sheldon Road, as most of you know, between Elk Grove, Florin, and Waterman. And the speed limit has been changed to forty miles an hour. Well, since it's been changed, there's a lot of people that use Sheldon as a thoroughfare to go over to Rancho Cordova, which is their right. But it's been a speedway. to go over to Rancho Cordova, which is their right, but it's been a speedway because 40 miles an hour is way too slow. So if you're a good, law-abiding citizen like myself, and you're on Sheldon Road going home, and people behind you are tailgating you because you're going too slow, well, I'm here to tell you that I've gotten one ticket in my life, and it was a few years ago on Christmas Eve, talking on my cellphone. So if Elk Grove PD means business, I'm gonna go 40 miles an hour. So I'm here to say thank you, because right now, we have reader boards right near my house on Sheldon Road. There's one going east that says ticket is minimum $235. Going west is a reader board that will tell you how fast you're going. So I'm really happy to see that, Chief Noblet, because I'm hoping it'll keep people from trying to push me off the road because I choose to go 40 miles an hour because I don't want a speeding ticket. So next, we need to move over to from Elk Grove Florin going east and west to 99 because even though that's two lanes going both ways, 40 miles an hour, if you travel on that at any time at all, people do not go 40 miles an hour. So I'm happy to see it in our rural area because we need it, and so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Randy Becker.
Congratulations. As I privately supported you, I publicly support you today. There's gonna be times that we're just not gonna get along. There's gonna be times that people are gonna tell you things that you're not gonna like, and tonight's one of them. Quite frankly, I'm a little pissed off. As all you know, that my roots are on the east side. That's where I grew up. That's where I live. Occasionally, I've moved or traveled and gone to businesses on the west side. I watched the dog and pony show, and quite frankly, afterwards, all I can say is that you all were propped up and became props. There was no interaction with the citizens, not one, other than the ones invited. Yes, there has been rumors about a hospital possibly doing this or that, but this is huger than rumors. You know, there was dissent about the casino being built where it proposed site is. However, there wasn't any homes directly in and around that property. Now there's being homes being built close to the proximity. I came in support of the potential of the module that was gonna be built right next to homes, and I said to you then, and I say to you tonight, it is unfortunate that we have a city that was laid out by the County Board of Supervisors and the first sitting Elk Grove Council. But you guys, you council members and the mayor, have a chance not to allow a big monstrosity to end up in people's backyard. It's ridiculous. The mayor wanted a hospital in his election. I get that we need a hospital on the I-5 corridor. There isn't one from North Stockton to Sacramento. I understand the importance of it. I really do. But it does not need to be built where the proposed site is. And for somebody to get up here as a PR, that's bull. That's absolutely ridiculous and disrespectful to the citizens of Elk Grove. I don't know these people. I've been in their establishments once or twice. This is gonna be a fight, and you better figure out if you want to be part of it and what side of history you want to be on, because by God, the citizens own those seats, and you need to figure out if you want to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing that there are no additional speakers sign up to speak, I want to close public comment and move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. A few items of note. Today, nearly 80 employees met for a half-day work session to draft and establish employee-focused values and vision. This is part of the city's diversity and inclusion efforts and builds upon diversity-focused groups that were held in December of 2018. Wanted to let the council know about a Public Works Grant Award. A city project includes $329,000 to replace outdated guardrails at three locations along Laguna Creek Bridge, on Grantline Road at Deer Creek Tributary Bridge, and additional $250,000 was granted for pedestrian crossing upgrades at four existing mid-block trail crossings at Laguna Park Drive, Adobe Springs Way, Burtwin Way, and Stone Brook Drive. These crossings will receive additional signage, crosswalk markings, and rapid rectangular flashing beacons. Total cost of the project is estimated at $410,000. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and January 11 specifically is recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. To bring attention to this issue and to reduce the instances of human trafficking, the police department is partnering with Sir Optimus International Velcrove on an outreach campaign. Messages being posted on the Audemars Pigme electronic sign, and posters are being placed in E-Train buses that include the hotline phone number. Social media posts will reinforce this message online. Elk Grove Restaurant Week debuts. Explore Elk Grove is coordinating the first Elk Grove Restaurant Week, January 18 through 27, for 10 days. Local participating restaurants will offer unique menus, with a portion of each bill benefiting the Elk Grove Food Bank. For a list of participating restaurants, visit exploreelkrove.com. Elk Grove's Youth Commission, who you hear from tonight, and CSD's Teen Action Committee will host the annual Shape Your Future event next Saturday, January 19, from 10 to 2 at the Wackford Community Center. Participants will learn about the tools and skills needed to balance a checkbook, prepare a resume, and find scholarship opportunities. We're discovering and discussing possible career paths during this free event. Registration information is available on the city's website. Like to highlight some upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. activities that the city is gonna be participating in. City Velcrove, Consumnis Community Services District, MLK 365, Greater Sacramento NAACP, and other local partners will celebrate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. during two events this month. The first, Elk Grove Martin Luther King Legacy Breakfast, will be held on Saturday, January 19, at Laguna Town Hall, beginning at 8:00 a.m. Cost to attend is $20 for adults and $10 for youth. Registration is available at the door and on Eventbrite. Elk Grove residents are encouraged to walk with their neighbors at March for the Dream on Monday, January 21. Look for the Elk Grove banner at the start of the march at 8:30 a.m. in front of the Sacramento City College Bookstore, and walk with us. The city will be handing out March shirts, as well as 11-by-17 March signs, and Elk Grove exhibit will also be part of the Diversity Expo inside the Sacramento Convention Center. Details are available on the city's website. Just a reminder that the city will observe Holiday 4 Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday, January 26, 21, and we will reopen the next day. I'm gonna bypass the rest of the updates on some of our projects, but all this information is available on the city's website if the council has any questions or members of the community are interested in some of the other things going on. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Nope, no questions. All right. Council updates. Want to start, Councilwoman Detrick?
You know, as late as it is, going through the holidays, there are a lot of celebrations, but I'll just go ahead and pass for tonight.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I'll also recognize that we're kind of behind schedule on this meeting already, but I do want to mention two things. One, we had the sanitation district board meeting this morning. I was elected as chair of the sanitation district, so look forward to serving that capacity.
Congratulations.
And ask if the council would like to have an update on the Echo Water Project. The mayor and I got to see an update on that today, and just it's boggling the scope of work.
Yeah, it's pretty impressive. I mean, the amount of work that's being put into right next to us. It's probably important for us.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. Two billion dollars, yeah.
The only other thing I'll mention is I attended the ribbon cutting for the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center earlier today. Happy to have them in their new home. It's a wonderful space, even if I'm a little biased given that they're now a tenant, but they were able to move in there, and it's a true, has a much more of a feeling of a nice art gallery, and they have a space to be able to hold workshops. So whether you are interested in learning art or teaching art, please get ahold of them if you'd like to follow through with that. That's all I have. Thank you. Oh, actually, one last thing is, once we're done with the speeding awareness program on Sheldon Road, I did have some folks complain to me that Emerald Vista has become something of a speedway, and there was an accident involving a parked car that if the car hadn't been there, the person probably would have ended up in the living room of the home.
Okay. Councilman Sun.
Yeah, just, it's late, but I do want to quickly mention, last Saturday, Councilmember Nguyen, Councilmember Detrick, and myself attended the celebration of life for Judy Tefoya. It was a great event, excuse me, it was a great event for all that she's done for her community in promoting the arts, but I just want to give a special shout-out to Councilmember Nguyen because she really was a major role in planning that whole event for everyone and the family, so thank you.
Okay, excellent. I'm gonna also wave my report. You know, obviously, we break during the holidays, so aside from attending numerous parties, that's pretty much it. One thing that I think is extremely important is, it was flagged to my attention by a member of the community, I don't know if she's still here, Connie Connolly, in regards to the Audemars Pigme gift card incentive program, which I thought was interesting. Now, it was before my time, and I know that for the veteran members that have seniority, you can probably tell a little bit more about it, but what I'm interested in is providing an opportunity for staff to bring back and to hear more about it and to discuss it. I'm looking for a consensus from the council for that.
Well, I saw the email string today. You know, I was a proponent of the program when it was first implemented, given that the dire economic times. The email string that I saw today showed, kind of painted a different picture with respect to the return on investment from the city, but I'd be willing to have an open discussion about that.
Yeah, we can hear about it. I mean, it's no harm to that.
I too saw the email chain, and the data showed that, I don't know how many folks, it compelled them to buy a car, but, and I'm a little skeptical on whether or not, you know, $500 gift card is gonna make me purchase a $20,000, anecdotally, $20,000 expenditure, but I'm willing to hear it.
Okay. If you can bring it back. All right. I think that's it for reports. Next item.
Take us to Section 8, Consent Calendar Items.
I have a question of the city attorney. John, you and I spoke, and I need to recuse myself because of proximity on item 8.7. Does that require a physical recusal or is just a note of that?
As long as the matter remains on the consent agenda, you do not need to leave the room. If it is pulled from the consent, then you would need to leave the room for the vote. But when you, if, assuming it stays on consent, you would just make a note that your vote in favor of the consent agenda did not go to that item.
Okay.
All right, so we have a consent calendar items.
We have one speaker.
Oh, we do. Okay. Connie Connolly, 8.1, coming up.
Good evening again. This is something I learned from my mentor, Danetta Garcia, when you forgot something on a previous time up here at the public comment. I am in favor of 8.1. So now I'm gonna use the rest of my time on what I forgot. I would respectfully request that you also close the meeting in honor of Al Maraz. He is the CSD firefighter who was killed right before Christmas.
Absolutely.
I also want to congratulate Jason. I have to say, in my 18 years of being involved in city government, it's the first time that a city manager agreed to meet with activists, answers emails, answers his phone. I don't know if it had something to do with the word interim in front of it, but I hope now that that word has dropped, that it'll continue because it's very welcomed and it's very much appreciated. I wish you luck, sir. The last thing is the Elk Grove Audemars Pigme Gift Card Program. I thank you for at least putting it on the agenda and letting the community weigh in. I know that the Audemars is very much in favor of it, and I think we will prove that, give you an example, you know, CarMax has been somewhat of an issue with competition. You saw some data that John Dreevy pulled together. He is a very well-respected business owner here in Elk Grove. He partnered with me. I met with him. I picked his brain. I went home that night, and I wrote the proposal, and I think you saw in the email that he said, Connie, this is exactly what we discussed. You wrote it exactly as we decided, and go forward. I think that if we market it well, and the Audemars has offered to use their PR and partner with Kristin, and I think we can do one hell of a PR campaign. It's not about just buying a car in the Audemars. It's about promoting our small businesses and getting people who receive that gift card to spend it in Elk Grove, because we, as we all know, if you spend locally, it turns over seven times. And so I think there's, it's bigger than that. But if you had a choice, if you're a loyal Elk Grove resident, and you see your Nissan, used Nissan Rogue over at the CarMax, or you see the same Nissan, used Nissan Rogue at Elk Grove Nissan, and they're the exact same car, the exact same price, but you're offered some incentive because you're gonna give back to your community, I would bet money that buyer would buy it at Elk Grove Nissan Darren. So when you're thinking about that, just remember that, you know, even if you come from a place of comfort, a lot of people can't afford new cars, but they can be in the market for a good-use car, and I want them to buy it at the Elk Grove Audemars and not at CarMax. Sorry. I want those sales tax dollars to stay in our city so we can provide the services our citizens have come to expect. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, want to close public comment. Council deliberation direction.
I would move the consent calendar noting my recusal on item 8.7.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose abstention. All right, next item.
We have no items under Section 9 for the public hearings, so that'll take us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is to receive a presentation on the street light pole painting program.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Sean Gallagher, Operation Maintenance Division Manager, and this is Stephanie, also with Operations and Maintenance. Tonight, we are gonna present to you a presentation on the street light pole painting program, which is a sub-program of the street light maintenance program. Operations and Maintenance is charged with maintaining, change that, many city-owned assets throughout Elk Grove. The list here is a good representation of the many assets O&amp;M maintains. Each asset, whether it is the estimated 20,000 street signs, 1,125 lane miles of road, or the 2 million-plus linear feed of storm drain pipe, needs to have a program that details the asset, budget, and level of service to be provided or needed. O&amp;M is continuing to develop these types of programs for the many assets we maintain. These programs do not just provide an overview, but help the division review and improve the way they are maintained. The street light maintenance program was one of the first developed programs. There are currently just under 14,000 city-owned streetlights within the city of Elk Grove. Current development continues to add streetlights regularly, and O&amp;M expects the number to be well over 14,000 in the next 12 months. The asset is valued at over $100 million and consists of eight different types. Two standard are the galvanized and six decorative types. The city is broken up into two zones. Zone 1, the largest, contains nearly 80% of the streetlights. Zone 2, which covers the Laguna Ridge area, as shown in the green base color on the map, the lights shown in yellow on the map are smudged, but the city funds them. These lights are typically placed on utility poles in areas where streetlight infrastructure does not currently exist. Streetlight maintenance is funded through four sources: gas tax, streetlight maintenance zone, district, Zone 1, streetlight maintenance district, Zone 2, and Measure 8 funds. Streetlight Maintenance Zone District 2, or Zone 2, is fully capable of supporting streetlight maintenance and does not need to be supplemented through gas tax or Measure 8. The reason for this is Zone 2 collects a higher rate within the district and has the ability to increase over time. ability to increase over time. Zone 1 rate was set without an escalator and must be supplemented annually. But as you can see by the graph, or the chart here, the development of the streetlight maintenance program was able to reduce costs while adding hundreds of streetlights but increasing service. The chart here shows the cost for the five main maintenance activities within the program over the past three fiscal years. As you can see, despite the addition of the street light pole painting program, we have been able to reduce costs in several areas while increasing the number of streetlights while implementing the pole painting. O&amp;M was able to reduce costs through four key efficiencies. First, prior to the development of the streetlight maintenance program, the city undertook two streetlight LED conversion projects, which reduced electricity costs and provided a long-term savings for the division. The next three efficiencies were gained through the development of the program. The first was the review of the underground utility markings contract, which requires the location of underground utilities through California's DIG Alert program. O&amp;M changed its utilities marking service contract, which saved the division $450,000 annually. Utility marking consists, costs are split three ways between the streetlight, traffic signal, and drainage budget. Changing contractors saves the streetlight budget $150,000 annually. The next change O&amp;M made was to change how streetlight material was purchased. By the city purchasing the material and stocking it for the contractor significantly reduced material costs and lead time on material that the contractor may not have in stock. The last efficiency implemented thus far was continued examination of contractor processes and rates. The streetlight pole painting program is a very visible, is very visible to the public, and O&amp;M was able to reduce these costs and improve services. Tiffany will now discuss the program's implementation, development, and ongoing need.
The initial undertaking was to identify all of the painted streetlight poles, which began with an asset inventory and field verification. It was discovered during this process, a number of streetlights were unaccounted for, accounted for although they were private, or weren't physically located where originally mapped. These inconsistencies led to a complete recollection of the streetlight data. With the expertise and assistance from the city's GIS team, use of our interns, and staff research, the goal of identifying streetlight poles was accomplished in a relatively short amount of time. The accurate data on the total quantity of streetlight poles, locations, and types was generated, excuse me, with staff-compiled maps and began creating the streetlight maintenance pole, streetlight pole painting program. The map shown here reflects all of the painted streetlights in red and powder-coated streetlights in green. Funding for the program needed to have close examination before determining how long the initial phase of the program should last and what could realistically be accomplished over the full life of the program. Since Zone 1 funding can't support all of the streetlight maintenance needs, analysis on the impact of other funding sources was a critical to the implementation and development. The chart before you highlights one of the major accomplishments O&amp;M made while developing the program. Through our review of O&amp;M's existing contract, the question was asked if we could do better on the pricing if we used a specialized contractor. We had established good maps with condensed locations and neighborhoods that required little traffic control or difficulty accessing the poles. Could we reduce costs because of this effort? The answer is yes, we could and did. By pulling the specialized task from the one-size-fits-all contractor, O&amp;M was able to significantly lower rates. The division increased the work while at the same time reducing costs. The program is devised to set a repainting cycle for Laguna West painted poles shown on the left and the Laguna Ridge powder-coated poles shown on the right. Because the poles in Laguna West had not seen painting, maintenance, in over 20 years, there was extreme deterioration. The existing condition on any asset is a key consideration when establishing maintenance schedules. So, the Laguna West poles needed to be first brought to a maintainable condition and were given priority to complete this effort within three years, after which the poles would be painted on a 10-year cycle. The Laguna Ridge powder-coated poles were by and large newer and were not nearly as distressed. Because of this, because of this, the 10-year cycle was implemented from the beginning. The painting cycle is programmed to average 200 poles per year, which is subject to expansion with development. These maps were a great first step in realizing how O&amp;M can develop other asset management plans and adjust quantities to keep the program at a funding level necessary. With the continuation of the program, decorative streetlight poles will never reach the level of deterioration you see here. Having the right tools to manage this asset and others as asset management programs are being constructed will ensure the city stays in the condition residents expect. The goal is to have this program maintenance approach to prevent residents from ever having to notify the city of a deplorable condition while also providing detailed information on when an asset is scheduled for replacement or maintenance. Another benefit of this approach is the reduction in costs associated with reactionary-only work. It gives us the ability to answer questions with accuracy and provide confidence to residents citywide that what they are seeing matters to us, and we have a plan.
The streetlight maintenance program is one program O&amp;M has implemented, with many others being developed. O&amp;M plans to return to council in the near future to detail how we will continue to develop these programs and maintain them long-term through an asset management system. Thank you, and we're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, what is the underlying material of the painted street poles?
It's, it can mix from pole to pole. Some are aluminum, but most are cast iron.
Okay. Would it not, in the long-term, be more cost-effective to strip the poles down, seal them, and then never have to paint them again?
So, the galvanized poles are the benefit because they never need any sort of maintenance to them. But the painted poles were installed, and while we did strip them, the material needed to do that would require to take the pole down and take it to a facility and have it done. So, the cost would be extreme versus the $275 we're paying per pole to be painted currently on a 10-year cycle.
Okay. And how much does a new galvanized pole cost?
A new galvanized pole can cost around $2,000. A painted pole, mattering on the size and the type, can range anywhere from $5,000 to $15,000.
Okay. And do we have policies in place so that we're not chasing this tail going forward? In other words, standards for the types of light poles we install from here on out?
Well, we have standards that, we actually have, I think, 11 different types of poles in town, and so there are, our general standard is for the Cobra Head, which is the galvanized, which is generally what you see.
Okay.
But there are standards that allow developments to use the decorative poles, and that's really what you're seeing here. You're seeing the decorative poles. And so if a developer wants to use a decorative pole, it's, it's an option that's available.
Okay. And I do agree that they, they look nice. Do we then factor that into their landscape and lighting district or their Melrose?
It would be, it would be part, if they were in the correct zone, we'd be able to charge the rate that would recoup the cost. I think that's one of the things that we've taken away from this, is to look at those two zones and the rates and try to understand, is there a way we can alter those? So if we end up with a development in Zone 1, which is larger, that wants to use decorative poles, we're not stuck with the lower rate that never changes.
Okay. All right. Thank you for those answers, and I just want to say, you know, I think this is an important exercise because it's kind of akin to the broken windows theories, that if you start to let the neighborhoods deteriorate visibly, then that just starts a slow decline. So, thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight the importance of your work, because, you know, the shiny new object is what most people pay attention to, the new road, the new light posts, and this is so important, and it get, as we grow, there's more things to operate and maintain. So, just thank you for your diligence on this work.
Awesome. No more questions. Thank you. All right, let's go to the next item.
Take us to Item 10.2, which is to receive a presentation on recent economic development activities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Darryl Don, I'm the city's Economic Development Director. I'm here this evening to give you a brief update on activities and accomplishments of the Economic Development Department, focusing on the last three years and then also looking forward a bit at the end. So, I'm gonna run through this fairly quickly. I can't do justice to everything we've been up to for that amount of time and the amount of time that I have, so I've chosen to focus on these things, which are how we organize the department, our attraction results, our attraction pipeline. I'm gonna give a report on incentives that have been given out over the last bit of time, and then we'll open up to questions and direction. And then I've attached, as an appendix, a market snapshot and update that I just don't have time to go through, but it will become part of the record. So first, the organization and strategy of the department. This is your economic development team. First, I would be remiss if I did not turn to Jason and give him my hearty congratulations. I am absolutely thrilled with that decision. I think you guys all made a great decision, and he definitely gets economic development. I think that'll be a great help going forward. So, our team is, is the interim city manager, soon-to-be the city manager, myself, Rachel Brown, who is in the audience, and Luis Aguilar, who is in the audience, and sitting between them is our new, very capable student intern, Madison Bukola. These are great, passionate, dedicated economic development professionals, all residents of the city of Elk Grove as well, which is important, and they just do a great job. I, not exaggerating when I say that we have the best team in the region, hands down. And we're gonna continue to get better. This is the budget. On the left is the budget for the city. Economic development is funded almost entirely out of the general fund, actually, it is funded entirely out of the general fund. So, our operations, current operations budget is about $525,000. Our current personnel budget for three FTEs is about $500,000. And so our total budget is about $1,025,000. That's been pretty consistent for the last, well, for the time that I've been here since 2015. People ask what incentive funds we have. We have two funds with a modest amount of money in them relative to everything else that goes on in the city. We have our Economic Development Fund, which is kind of a catchall for larger incentives with a balance, approximate balance today of almost $1.3 million. And then, two years ago, this council created the Small Business Incentive Fund, and that has a balance of about $190,000. So, in total, we're just under $1.5 million in incentive funds available at any given time. This is our mission. It is to ensure a robust and diverse economy that returns value to the city and its residents, and is positioned to weather the ups and downs of the broader economy. These are the outcomes we try to achieve, and there are three critical ones. One is, we try to attract capital investment to the city so that we have money flowing into the economy and exchange of goods and services and, and real estate and development transactions flowing through the economy. We are dedicated to growing the city's commercial tax base. These are the primary commercial taxes that many businesses pay, and everything we do is often filtered through, will this project we're supporting grow that tax base. And then, of course, it's, it's jobs. We're very heavily engaged in job attraction. I say attraction and not creation because, as you know, governments don't create jobs, the private sector does, but we do what we can to attract companies that, with good jobs, to our city. And we try to do that across multiple industries at varying wages and skill levels. This council adopted seven strategic focus areas for economic development at the 2017 council retreat. They are listed here: Target Industries, and Emerging Employment Centers, Lifestyle Amenities, Startup and Small Business Support, Workforce Development, Visitation, Regional Leadership, and Marketing and Branding. We have three primary business platforms that all fall under the title of Business Development. We're a business development agency. Our job is to generate business leads, turn them into prospects, turn them into locates, and then help them expand. That's the cycle. And we do that through a business traction, expansion, and retention platform that has 10 points to it. I'm not gonna go through all of these in detail, but you can see them there: Business Traction Expansion, Business Retention. We offer site selection services, that's a lot of what we do. We, we work with our friends in Development Services and other departments to expedite approvals. Nobody does that better in the region than us. We have the data to back that up. We provide hiring assistance. In limited cases, we provide incentives. We manage and oversee the city's hospitality agency and also look to attract new hospitality businesses to the city. Rachel Brown actually is currently the president of Visit Elk Grove and is a board member. We seek to attract elevated and new entertainment, dining, and retail concepts of the city, that's called lifestyle. We do marketing. We do very organic branding and marketing. I don't believe in spending a lot of money on paid advertising for economic development purposes because this is a relationship business, and you're gonna do business with somebody you know, not because of an ad that you see. We do a little bit, though. And we engage in the region and show strong leadership in the region. In addition to all of those services that we provide and activities that we do, we have special enhanced services just for small businesses to recognize their importance. That's all the services that I showed you on the last slide. Plus, we have a dedicated staff person, who is Luis Aguilar behind me, whose primary function it is to assist small businesses. He does that all day, every day, as well as a lot of other things that he's assigned. We, last year, we launched a Small Business Development Center that is hosted at City Hall. Just in 2018 alone, we served 51 budding small businesses with business consulting and financial consulting services that turned into six new business starts. We provide permit expediting assistance that is tailored for small businesses through our TI Tuesday program. We launched last year Open Counter, which is an online tool that allows any small business owner and big business owner to access all of the information you could get from our Development Services counter at any time, from any place, whenever they'd like. There's a Small Business Loan Program, our Brewery and Winery Assistance Program that we launched two years ago, which has now led to five startup breweries in Elk Grove, four in business, one is coming, including Dreaming Dog, who was here earlier. We helped them get set up and started. And we have our Sewer Fee Credit Program, which is sort of a little-known program, but it provides very meaningful, small incentives amounts that don't come from the city, they come from the sewer district directly to businesses. And then we have, our third real platform is the Incentives Platform. So, we have seven monetary incentives, the first seven items there, that all come with, in addition to money, and sometimes not money, but always technical services: site selection, market evaluation, all of the services that we can provide to help somebody make an informed business decision about locating in Elk Grove. Then the eighth item is something we have called the Economic Development Project Review Team, that is to expedite approvals. I will say, we don't really use that because our Development Services Department is, like I said, they are the best in the region, hands down. We don't need to specifically, in special cases, expedite approvals because we're so fast at what we do. It's nice to have it, though, it's good marketing. This is our process. So, I said, we are a business development agency and a relationship-building agency. And so, I mentioned leads, prospects, locates, and expansions. So, what that means is, a lead is a business with needs that we have engaged in some way. We've met them, we found out what their need is, we might have had a quick chat, we maybe exchanged emails. That's all generated through our branding and relationship activity. And we have a very robust list of leads right now. We take a lead, and we work it. We try to turn it into a prospect. And we do that by actively and directly engaging that business and trying to give them the information they need to either start evaluating Elk Grove or finish evaluating Elk Grove. When we have a prospect, we try to turn them into a locate. A locate is a business that has made a decision, they've selected Elk Grove, they intend to move forward with the project. Some locates get announced, and they don't actually materialize. That's, that's how the business works. You cast a lot of lines and you catch a few fish. But most locates move forward through a permitting process and a construction process and actually open for business. And then, once you're here, we work hard to keep you here through our Business Retention and Expansion Program with an eye towards helping companies be successful and expand in Elk Grove. I've said this many times, but it is far easier for us to spend our resources, well, it's not easier, it is far more efficient for us to spend our resources helping an existing business expand than it is to attract a new business to the city. So now, I want to jump into Attraction Results. I'm covering three years of Attraction Results because that is the amount of time I've been here, and, and that's what I know about. So, we track business, we, we track locates that become businesses pretty robustly. We have a lot of data on that. These are, what you see in this, on this slide, these are businesses that we have directly assisted who have either made a selection decision or have actually, or are under construction or who have actually opened in the last three years occupying space of 5,000 square feet or more. You get any smaller than that, and it gets, it gets kind of hard to track and get good data on that. But over this three-year period, from the direct efforts of the Economic Development Department, we have had 26 locates that have generated 4,360 jobs. They occupy one, almost 1.3 million square feet. They've brought in 100 and 120. They've brought in 112, plus or minus, million dollars in capital investment. That's just in construction and FFNE and TI work. That isn't all the indirect capital that flows through a community because of businesses in place. Those 26 locates are projected to generate 44.1 million dollars in new sales tax revenue over the next 10 years, and will generate payrolls of about $1.8 billion over the next 10 years. So, these are the key metrics, again. It's how many jobs, how much space do they occupy, what was their capital investment, how will they grow our sales tax, and what kind of payrolls do they bring to the community? So the first four bullets, those are things that are in place. The next two bullets are things that we project over a 10-year timeline, using sort of industry standard metrics for tax generation and payroll generation. So of those 4,363 jobs added, the top three were Apple. Apple has grown significantly since 2015. I mean, that's coincidence, not just because I'm here. They're definitely in a growth phase that they started a couple of years ago with construction of their new parking lot and their wellness center. They retrofitted a shipping building into 110,000-square-foot logistics center. All of that went through our process. My office spearheaded that for them, and they've grown significantly in terms of jobs, and also in terms of sales tax revenue. They now generate approximately a million and a half dollars just by themselves in sales tax revenue, and are now, well, I can't tell you the precise number, but they're in our top 10 sales tax generators. Couple of years ago, they were generating no sales tax. So you can see, they put that logistics facility to good use. So moving on. Those were businesses that we helped directly. A lot of the economic activity in any economy sort of happens indirectly, and it's because, you know, all of the intangibles about why somebody would want to live here and do business here, leads businesses to make locational decisions without ever asking for help. You know, they probably go through our permit process, but they're not businesses that I need to engage, because I either don't know about them, we don't know about everything that's going on in our economy, or they haven't asked for help. So you can see, over the last three years, we've had 51 locates that have generated 2,627 jobs, added or retained. Occupied, you know, nearly 830,000 square feet of space, very significant capital investments, and have generated about $6.1 million in new sales taxes. So on the right, you can see sort of the categories. We, let me go back a slide. How do we do that? There we go. So we track businesses in eight industry-standard categories, which are the colored, the text on your left. And then, what you see there is the percentage as a measurement of job gains in those different categories. So you can see there that professional, scientific, and technical, obviously, that's about 50% because that's where Apple falls into place. On the indirect job gains, you see a much, you see a much even, more evenly divided pie, and I think that just represents, because there's just a lot of sort of natural churn in your economy, and businesses of all shapes and sizes come in and open up, but they still amount to significant economic development impacts, even though we didn't have to directly assist them. That's great, because it frees us up to help the companies that we do need to help. And then, if you look at the total gains over that same three-year period, this is through the end of 2018, in total, just of businesses over 5,000 square feet, and I'll caveat that by saying, there's a lot of businesses smaller than 5,000 square feet that aren't captured in these numbers. We've had 77 locates, i.e. new businesses, again, either made a selection decision, they're under construction, or they're up and operating, that have generated almost 7,000 jobs, occupied 2.1 million square feet of space, have generated $155 million of capital investment, nearly over $50 million in new sales tax revenue over the next 10 years are projected, and they are paying out almost $3 billion in payrolls. A note on payrolls, we do not know at any given time exactly how many of our residents work for Elk Grove companies and do that work in Elk Grove. There just isn't data on that that's reliable. We gather it as we talk to companies, and I think the number's probably 30%, 35% today. So that payroll benefit is really a larger regional benefit, because a lot of people come, more people come into Elk Grove and work and go live somewhere else than the opposite of that. But regional benefit is important, too, so that's why we provide you that figure. I'll talk briefly about our attraction pipeline. One of the key things we do, one of the main things we do, is we respond to RFIs and RFPs. That's Requests for Information and Requests for Proposals. So those comes from a lot of different sources. They come from brokers, they come from corporate real estate executives who are doing a search in our region, they come from the state's Department of Economic Development, aka GoBiz, and they come increasingly from greater Sacramento, as they start to ramp up their capabilities after three years of existence. And so, what we do is, we receive those RFPs and RFIs, we evaluate the search criteria, we make an informed decision about whether our community is a good fit for that type of a business. Often, it comes down to whether we have the real estate facilities in place for that type of business, which is one of our, as you've heard from me before, that's one of our biggest Achilles' heels, Achilles' heels. But we respond to the RFPs and the RFIs that makes sense with a very thoughtful, well-done proposal, and we did that last year for almost 15 different companies. Frankly, these often do not turn into anything, because they are doing regional, or even statewide, or even western states searches. But we still do it, and we hope to land one eventually. Just in 2018 alone, these were our locates for that, for this last year that just ended. Apple was an expansion. Elk Grove Powersports was a retention and an expansion. Me Rancho was a new attraction into the community. Costco, of course, was a new attraction into the community. Marriott Town Suites, which is under construction, you can see it right across Highway 99 here, is a new attraction into the community. Hungry Pecker Brewing is a new brewer with a funny name, and they will be opening soon. They are in, going through our permitting process, and they will be locating, I'm actually happy to say, in Old Town, at the site of where the former spa store was that closed down recently, which was quite an eyesore, and now it's going to be repurposed as a manufacturing facility for a microbrewer. They'll have a tasting room. This is all presuming they get their CUP from the Planning Commission. That's, again, that's the fifth brewer that we've helped, and when I came on, there were no brewers in town. CNU Medical Center, which was just announced, again, we consider something a locate when they have made a selection decision. Again, it does not mean the project will happen, it still has to go through its entire process, but there has to come a point at which we put it on the list and consider it something that is coming our way. This is our current prospect pipeline. I'm very excited by this. I don't know who I'm criticizing by saying this, but three years ago, when I took this job, there was not a robust pipeline of businesses, not of this scale, and it wasn't for lack of trying. But what I've been focused on over the last three years is building that organic brand, and building those relationships with brokers, with developers, with owners, with other economic development agencies in the region and throughout the state, and getting the word out that we're serious about doing business. So when we get a few locates, like a Costco, that starts to build our brand. Even locates that don't materialize, like you remember NRC, some people say that stands for not really coming, which is clever, and it didn't happen. But that's not a bad thing, because, you know, again, a company like that, we worked with them for a long time, nearly 18 months, to get them committed to Elk Grove. They selected us, they then weren't able to execute against that choice, not for the fault of the city, and they go away. But we make excellent relationships through that. We made relationships through that process with the industrial brokerage community in the South Bay. That business owner became very fond of Elk Grove and has sent more than one business our way. So even when we don't land a project, we're still building that brand. All of that goes into creating a pipeline of prospects. And again, these are companies that we are actively engaged in, engaged with right now in a substantive fashion, helping them with the information they need to make an informed corporate real estate decision about locating or expanding to Elk Grove. You can see that if all of this were to hit, it would be quite significant. It's not all going to hit, that isn't how it works, but some of it will hit. You know, you can see a project the size of 800,000 square feet, and another one there the size of 495,000 square feet. I mean, some of these are very big projects that could have substantial outcomes for the city from an economic development standpoint. This is what gets me up every morning, it's what our guys are focused on, and girls are focused on, you know, 24/7. If we're not helping a small business, we're pursuing one of these prospects. That's what we do. And you can see how, on the right, how that breaks down. We continue to be a really strong destination of choice for healthcare. Healthcare service providers, you've heard about the hospital, we have Kaiser, Sutter, Dignity, UC Davis, CNU, all operating here. They all have various plans to do projects, some are farther along than others, but I think healthcare is a big part of how we succeed going forward in terms of bringing employers to our emerging employment centers. This council asked for an incentives report, and again, I've only been on the job since 2015, so I'm going back to 2010, because that's when we've done the majority of the incentives to give you a full picture. I can't take creditor blame for anything that happened before I got here, but we wanted to give you the full picture. So since 2010, we've provided 15 financial incentives. They total $19.56 million. $15.2 million of that is Costco. So when you, and that's a pretty serious outlier, it was a large amount of incentive for a very, or a modest number of jobs, but again, we didn't do that incentive for the jobs, we did it for the sales tax. The jobs are icing on the cake. Those incentives have generated, by our math, 2,193 jobs, added or retained in the community. We count retentions and expansions and attractions, it's all the same, it's all economic activity and job growth. Those incentives have resulted in nearly 1 million square feet of occupied space, and approximately $133 million in capital investment. So the graph on the right, I did not include Costco in this, because if I include Costco, it just overwhelms the pie, and you can't see anything else on it. So I'm not trying to hide the ball there, just want you to be able to see, when you set that Costco outlier aside, this has been the majority of the focus of our incentives. So you can see, we provided a fairly, our second largest incentive we've ever provided was to correctional health. Part of that went to Pappas Investments, part of that went to the agency. We've provided $800,000 of financial incentives to the auto mall to three different dealers over the years. And the little tiny slices of pie are brewery grants. So through our winery and brewery incentive program, we provide very small micro grants to these very small micro businesses to get them up and running, that range between $5,000 and $10,000. And we've done that for every one of them, except we did not give money to Dreaming Dog. They didn't want our money, but we helped them in a lot of other ways. So those are your incentives. These are the incentives since I've been here. We've done six of them. The largest has been $81,000, and that was a second incentive for the expansion of California Correctional Healthcare Services. The $40,200 figure was the Universal Custom Display. That was a, that's a manufacturing business in our industrial area that was bursting at the seams and needed some funds to add some outdoor yard space, or they were going to have to leave, and we provided, you know, a very modest amount of money that retained 200 jobs in this community, so I'm not up here telling you about jobs we've lost. And on that point, I'm sorry if I'm sidetracking, but when we talk about direct job gains, we always net that against known losses. The only significant job loss, job losses we've had in the last couple of years were when the Isola plant on Dwight Road closed, and about 100 jobs were taken out of the community. That was a corporate decision made out of Arizona, had nothing to do with us. So anyway, these are the financial incentives for the last three years. I think we've been effective and judicious with our use of that money, including Costco, even though that's a large number. Even after the incentive, we still expect somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 million of sales tax gains over the 20-year life of that incentive. So we need to measure incentive performance, and the way we do that in my industry is, well, there's a lot of ways to do it, but the two that I've chosen here and that I've used most effectively in the past is a measurement of jobs per dollars. So that's, so basically, if you look at the second bullet there, incentive, that topic, incentive performance net of Costco. The second bullet is 2010 to 2018, so this is all the incentives we've ever provided. For every $2,164 of incentive money we provide, we get back one job. For every dollar of public money that we provide, we generate $28 in direct capital investment in the city. Again, that's just in facility construction. I don't factor in indirect spending. You know, while it may be true that every dollar spent in the local economy gets spent seven more times, you can ask seven different economists about that math, and they'll give you seven different answers. So I stay away from that. I focus for you, and for my department, we focus on direct gains to either the budget or the economy, and don't focus on, as much on indirect spending. And then, if you look at the Costco, at the incentive performance of just the Costco, because again, I've continued to net that out, that was not nearly as effective on a per-job basis, or a capital investment basis, but was extremely efficient in terms of a sales tax generation basis, or will be going forward if all goes well. The other major incentive we have are impact fee deferrals. We've been doing those since 2008. You remember, a couple of months ago, we were in front of the council, and you made that program permanent. It used to sunset on a regular basis. It's been incredibly effective and was, is one of our strongest tools. We have the best, one of the only, and the best, impact fee deferral program in the region, and probably in all of Northern California. We did some research on that recently, and our program is extremely good. So from 2008 to present, we've done 24 impact fee deferrals. Again, these are incentives, these are not subsidies, when we talk about impact fee deferrals. We incentivize development by deferring payments, but we do get paid at the end of the day. And of these 24 deferrals, all but one have been picture-perfect. They are either in repayment, or they've completed repayment. There's only one that's a problem that we're trying to work out. So anyway, we've deferred $5.3 million since 2008. That itself has generated 2,600-plus jobs, 740,000 square feet of occupied space, and almost $53 million of capital investment. Anything that I tell you is an incentive would already have been captured in the direct job gains, because we gave them an incentive, we directly assisted them. So these are not numbers in addition to those numbers. And our deferral performance has been decent. It's been, you know, we create one job for every $2,030 of incentive money, and we have a leverage of 10 to 1. I'll pause there and just say, I take incentives very seriously. I don't like to give them out. The number-one determining factor for a business location right now is not government money, it's talent, followed closely by location, followed closely by cost. The site selection industry right now is looking at incentives as a determinant to break a tie, and that's how we approach incentives. So I want you to know, I want the public to know. I live here, I'm a taxpayer, I've been doing this for 18 years. I don't take an incentive lightly. I would not recommend one to you unless I thought it was a lock-solid business decision. Sewer Connection Credits, I mentioned this earlier, this is a great program, we love this program. Many years ago, the sewer district provided local jurisdictions credits. When you go to build a building and you connect it to the sewer system, which we don't manage and control, that's a regional system, you have to pay a connection fee, and they can be quite high. So, you know, a little pizza shop might have a $10,000 bill. That can be the difference from that small business opening or not, or just never deciding to move forward. So this is a great program, we have these credits, they have street value, companies come to us, they are mostly small businesses, because those are the ones most impacted by something like this, and we give out these credits through a very simple agreement process under a program that you approved many years ago. If the credits exceed 15 credits, then it has to come to council. But most of these go to very small businesses that are under 5,000 square feet, that don't show up on our direct job gains report that we showed you earlier. Just from this program alone, and I want to give my predecessors, Heather and Randy and others, credit for this program, because they've done much more with it than I have. You know, this community has generated, we've helped 152 tiny, small businesses with this program, and we've granted almost $2.4 million in assistance that has generated, you know, roughly 4,400 jobs. Now, these are small businesses, they come, they go, so I'm not saying all these jobs are in the economy still, many of them probably are not, but... And our credit performance is, this is one of our better performing. We generate one job for every $526 of credits provided. Again, this is not general fund money, this is money that is given to us by the sewer district to support economic development. Quickly, key departmental accomplishments. This list kind of shrunk, and this is like a third of it, but I wanted to highlight some things we have accomplished for you in the last three years. Again, from the direct efforts of your Office of Economic Development and my fabulous team, we have generated 4,360 jobs, added or retained in this community, at varying wage levels across different industries, and we'll continue to do that work. 1.28 million square feet of occupied space, $112 million of new capital investment. There's your sales tax numbers and your payroll numbers that we showed you earlier. We've provided six incentives that you have approved. We acquired the Railroad Street property in Old Town as part of an effort to revitalize and, or launch the revitalization of that neighborhood, which we think can be a much higher point. higher performing retail and entertainment district. It's already a great place to live and shop, but it can be better, and we're committed to, you know, we bought that property, we completed the planning, and we'll soon be moving into a construction phase there. We launched Startup Elk Grove a couple of months ago. This is a very innovative incentive program that is one of our seven financial incentives geared towards tech startups. We have had tremendous response from that. We've had, we launched that on August 22nd. We've had roughly 60 inquiries that were qualified, and we've invited roughly 10 businesses to apply. We've received approximately six applications. We've been very judicious about this because it's a new thing, and I can tell you that we're looking at two very exciting coworking incubator-type spaces who we would provide grants to, and then two sort of scale-up-level startup companies, and then two very small, early-stage launch companies. All four of those companies, setting aside the two spaces, are all Elk Grove residents. So we've had, you know, we've had very good response to this. We're looking forward to actually making some grants soon, but we're going slow and we're being judicious because we're kind of setting up our template for how to do this. The brewery and winery incentive and assistance program was launched. We have five new breweries that would not be here without that program. Open counter launch, we talked about that. Our Small Business Development Center launched. We've helped 51 businesses directly just from that program alone in the last 12 months. We launched Inagrove, which is Elk Grove South County's only tech-focused coworking space. Visit Elk Grove, launched, not under my watch, but we've certainly played a very important role in helping to manage that. Businesswise was launched. Businesswise, I'll pause there. Businesswise is the best thing we ever did. It's, and you all received these emails, I hope, and I think many of our public, many of our residents do, but we needed a way to reach the business community quickly and succinctly, and we landed on, you know, ye olde email in lieu of more exciting, different technologies, because people still read emails every day, all day long, and that's how business gets done. And so every time something positive happens in our business community, Rachel prepares a very short little message that kind of reads like a press release, but it's not a press release. We have very strict rules. It's no more than three paragraphs. There's, there's an announcement, a quote, and some information, and we email that to about 8,000 people. That's how big our list has gotten. So if we meet you and you give me your business card, I'm probably going to put you on that list. There's an easy one-click, you know, unsubscribe, but we get more positive feedback on that. Hey, we love your emails. I read them. A lot of people don't read those kind of emails, because they're easy and they're short and they're simple, and I know I'm getting good news. So every time we hit that button, we reach 8,000 people. Those are, that is not geared towards residents, it's geared toward the business community. We love it that residents follow it, but it's brokers, it's developers, it's business people, it's site selection consultants, it's corporate real estate executives, that's who's on that list. And it's been incredibly effective in terms of building that organic brand I talked about. We completed an employment analysis two years ago that we brought to you that showed that our jobs-to-housing ratio was up to .86. We are just wrapping up a second phase of that analysis that I think will show that the number, I guarantee the number has gone up. And we'll also, for the first time, provide you information on our employed resident profile so that we can better align our attraction efforts with the skillsets of our residents. And we'll also, for the first time, evaluate our employment centers as they are starting to emerge, so Longleaf Drive, the areas around Apple, places like that. So we, so we sort of create a baseline of how many employees are there now, and how do we get that to 10,000 and meet CACOG's definition of employment centers so we can increase our transportation funding. We completed a retail strategy, which we continue to implement. We completed very extensive brand perception research, which showed that we have a, our brand in the, in the, in the region is that we are an up-and-coming community, and that's a great brand to have. In fact, that research showed that the region thinks better of us than many of our own residents, and that's a very positive play. We can, I can make brand ambassadors of our residents. It's a lot harder to make brand ambassadors of somebody in Rancho or Roseville or Folsom. They look at us as an up-and-coming community, and so we can build on that, and we are. And then lastly, we created, we've created two positions in three years. One was the Economic Development Coordinator position, and that's where we hired Rachel in 2015. We changed that and promoted her to Economic Development Manager, and then we created the new, fairly new, it's a year old now, the Economic Development Specialist position, which is Louis Segular behind me. And we always have a student intern or two floating through, they do good work. And then I'm going to end on ongoing and new initiatives. So things you will see coming from this department in the near future. We are going to be launching in partnership with the Elk Grove Chamber, a business expansion and retention program. Now, we do business expansion and retention activities now, but we do not have a formal program. And like much else with our, you know, we're on year three of a 10-year journey to success, and, and now in many cases, it's time to take the next step. So that's kind of what you see here. Having a formal business expansion or retention program is the next step. That's about identifying the most important businesses, the ones we can least afford to lose, and making sure that we have a very methodical approach to building and fostering that relationship with them. We are looking at bringing forward finally, a SEPA marketing platform. I think with the conclusion of infrastructure activities out there, and now the city owning a 20-acre parcel that is not technically in SEPA but is virtually in SEPA, I think we're now in a position to take property to market and try to seed development of the rest of SEPA by being very aggressive and proactive with property that we now or soon will own. We're also going to look at doing some campaigns now for the first time. So we'd like to launch a lead generation campaign that is geared towards businesses in Northern California with lease expirations coming up. So we'd be targeting them to make them aware that they can, don't sign that lease in Stockton, come to Elk Grove, that sort of thing. We are going to be bringing forward a testimonial campaign. We're starting to develop enough of a corporate base and have built enough relationships to where we can get people on camera talking about their experiences in Elk Grove, and when Jason and I go and meet with these larger businesses, it is always positive. We need to capture that, and we need to get that out in a, in a, in the formal campaign. We're also going to be launching a broker campaign in the near future. Brokers know about us, but I think they still look down their nose at us quite a bit. You know, South County, Cowtown, Small Town, you know, Nordstrom's Money, Walmart Taste, all of those things, we've got to get that perception changed, and I think the brokerage community still harbors some of those perceptions. And so we're going to be working on a campaign that is geared directly towards them, getting them to drink the Kool-Aid, if you know the expression. And then maybe most importantly, I think we are ready now to launch, launch a site selector campaign. So our site selectors all over this country, and we meet them at conferences. They do not know who we are, they do not know what we're about, they don't even know where we are. And we've got to get ourselves on the map, especially now that that SEPA infrastructure is wrapping up. And then we're going to be bringing back, like I said, an updated employment dynamics analysis. We have new web and brand properties that are nearly finished and look beautiful and are going to really set a new tone for how we portray ourselves digitally and in print. We have, we are working on a revised facade improvement program to further the efforts in Old Town. We're working on an Old Town marketing and management district. We are still working on that, it's, it's a difficult road, but making progress. Like I said, we are going to complete that Railroad Street project, and, and we're still looking at ways to develop the, the North Civic Center site with elevated retail and hospitality. So just a sampling of the things we'll be bringing towards you. And with that, that concludes my update, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Okay, go ahead.
So what have you been doing these last three years?
Yeah, I don't know, let me get back to you on that, Councilman.
Hey, I mean, look, it was long, but I appreciate the detail. There's, there's obviously a lot going on that you guys, your, your small team, I should say, is, is doing a lot out there, so keep at it. There's, there's good numbers here, and I'm really excited about the things coming down for the future.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I echo that. I was worried somewhere in the middle there, I might have to waive the 10 o'clock rule for your presentation, but I got to say, that's the best economic development presentation I've received in my 12 years on this council of the various iterations, simply because of the aggregation of everything that has been going on, that's been implemented, how effective it's been. You know, we get a lot of that sort of in fits and starts and, you know, a little bit here and there and, you know, week in, week out, but to see cumulatively what's been going on and what all you guys have been doing, as I've said before, economic development is like a duck. You see it calm on the top of the water, but those, those legs are moving underneath, and so keep up the good work, and I look forward to some exciting times ahead.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman?
And Darrell, thank you and the team for a good presentation. You know, you and I have a chance to talk occasionally one-on-one, and same thing, hearing the bits and pieces, but to see everything all together, it's pretty phenomenal, you know. Councilman Hughes, 12 years, I've been here 10, and to see the changes over that 10 years is, is pretty phenomenal, and the economic development team's been a big part of that. So thank you and the team, and look forward to bigger and better things.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And at this point, I want to open for a public comment. Got two speakers. First speaker is Randy Becker. Following Randy is Lynn Wheat. Randy, come on down.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, couple of questions. We kind of lost sight with the holidays, but the development agreement expired with HHC in our great ghost mall. And I'm aware that there may be some things that the city may not be able to discuss or where we are with that piece of property, but as much effort is being put in by the development department and everything else, that mall makes us look really bad. And during the heated conversations in this building, during the casino with patron, or with citizens, HHC said if they weren't going to build on that property, they planned on tearing it down. So where we are, where are we? What can the city do? What are we doing? Where are we going? Is there information that can be discussed? Because once it got out through the holidays that the DA expired, there's a lot of citizens out there that had no idea what was going on. Now that they, some of them do, are asking questions, and we need answers. Some type of answer. We in negotiations with them? They just sitting on their hands, doing nothing like they've always done? Changing the sign to 2025, 2026, 2030? It's not this city's fault in a lot of respect, but conveying the message to the citizens, now lay at your feet, unfortunately. Basically, the way I look at it is we've got a slumlord. If that was a house that looked like that, code enforcement would be all over it. So whatever we can do. The last thing I've got quickly is, is the continued expansion of Old Town. Prior to the spa, it used to be Elk Grove Feet Store.
Tom's Feet.
Tom's Feet, yep. So once again, I brought it up to Planning Commission last week, and I'll bring it up again. If we're going to expand Old Town like we're looking to do, we need a stoplight at Kent Street. Along with that, during the holidays, there was the announcement that monies were going to be released to redevelop, reconstruct Elk Grove Boulevard from Dare to Waterman. So is a light part of that? If it is, I'd like to know, because I'd like to stop talking about it. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Next speaker is Lynn Wheat.
I'd like to thank Mr. Doan for his report and hope that I could get a copy of that presentation to read it a little, again, and review it a little more closely. But there's two things that I noticed on it. First of all, I think it's really important that he's looking at bringing, that there's some interest for manufacturing firms to come here. And a number of years ago, we went through a rezone, and at that particular time, we had areas within our city in the south area that was set up for manufacturing, but we changed it over into commercial. So my concern about this is, is we go forward and Mr. Doan and his department continues to reach out to different variety of businesses, if we truly are looking at bringing more manufacturing in, that we have the lands available for that in that SEPA area, that we really, I, I want to caution you, because I saw it happen before, when I said manufacturing will come back, and indeed it has, but we had to patiently wait for that arrival date, that we make sure that we have the lands for that. I appreciate that I began to hear him talk about some of the businesses that we have lost, because I was only hearing about the ones that we brought, and, and even driving around town, I've seen some businesses, in particular, small businesses, have closed. So I'm glad to know that he was reporting a net so that we've had this positive direction. He brought up the one-problem deferral, and so that kind of piqued my interest, because if it's not something that's able to be resolved in favor of the city, then I'd like to know how much we as taxpayers are out deferring those fees. I think that that's important information that should be included in the report. Again, appreciate his report and hope that I can receive a copy of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. There are no additional speakers. I want to close public comment, Council of Village and Direction. Gentlemen?
Keep paddling.
Yeah? Thank you all the right track, Darrell. Appreciate it. Okay? All right. Next item.
Take us to item 10.3, which is to consider an ordinance amending particular sections of Elk Grove Municipal Code, Title 30, related to solid waste management.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christian Pruncelle, Integrated Waste Coordinator with your Recycling and Waste Division. This evening's presentation pertains to municipal code amendments within Title 30, solid waste management. I do have a brief presentation to discuss, an overview of the key concepts or key changes in the code. To give you some background information, in 2010, the City Council adopted Title 30 related to solid waste management and a resolution adopting council commercial refuse hauler fees and policies. Proposed amendments in the municipal code would ensure consistency with a new California statute and process improvements within the division. The first key change is Assembly Bill 1594, Alternative Daily Cover. This law mandates that as of January 1st, 2020, use of green material as alternative daily cover will no longer be considered as diverted waste. ADC is defined as materials such as grass clippings and leaves that is used to cover the landfill at the end of the day to control vectors, odors, and vermin. This bill is crucial due to composting, which helps reduce greenhouse gases, which protects the air we breathe and soil quality. Prohibition of the use of green waste as ADC is directed towards commercial properties, whereas residential green waste is already being used as sole amendment. Another change is within definitions, an amendment to the definition of dispose and an addition of the definition of compostable material to account for the ADC changes. Another amendment is to the definition of multifamily. We discovered an inconsistency between Title 23 and the franchise agreement. Title 23 defines multifamily as three or more units, while the franchise agreement defines multifamily as five or more units. We wanted to clear up this inconsistency with Title 30, so when we say multifamily, we're specifically talking about those properties that receive service from commercial haulers versus single-family properties that receive service from the franchise agreement. In regards to roll-off containers currently in the municipal code, this is only available for building permit projects, cleanup, and construction demolition projects. As the business community continues to grow and more waste is generated, we want to make this service available to allow Elk Grove to be even more business-friendly. This amendment to allow roll-off containers will be available to business customers subject to zoning clearance and plan check. In regards to vehicle inspections, annually, non-residential haulers submit vehicle and contact information. Sometimes the information remains the same, so the amendment is to conduct vehicle inspections triannually versus annually to improve efficiencies. However, I do want to note that non-residential haulers will still need to submit vehicle inspection documents purely to Sacramento Environmental Management Department. documents purely to Sacramento Environmental Management Department. In final regards to reporting, each quarter, we receive reports from each non-residential hauler with no changes and felt that it was necessary to make the change to an annual basis, to coincide with the city's required annual reporting with the California Department Resource Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle. I do want to note that with these two improvements, or changes, I should say, this has been highly well-received by our non-residential haulers, and it allows us to have that continued working relationship with them. To conclude, staffers recommending that the City Council consider amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 30 regarding solid waste management. This concludes my presentation for this evening. I am available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No. Seeing that there's nobody signed up for public comment, I'll go ahead and move staff for explanation.
Thank you.
Okay, want to open or close public comments? And we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention.
And that'll take us on to item 10.4, which is to consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 9.08.070, authorizing the Chief of Police to designate issues, special shooting permit for special events.
Mayor, members of the council, the last item was an ordinance. I assume your motion was an introduction and a first read of the ordinance. Is that correct?
I will amend my motion to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 30, Solid Waste Management, Sections 3010, 010, 3040, 050, 3050, 070, 3060, 130, and 3090, 080. Second.
Okay, got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be willing to forego staff's presentation on this final item.
All right.
If that pleases the council?
Yep. Yep, I'll come with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have somebody signed up.
Do we have someone? Okay, want to open for public comment? Ken Miller.
Good to see you, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, getting tired. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm Ken Miller with the Elk Grove Historical Society. I'm on the Board of Directors, and I'm the new chairman of an event that's been planned for quite some time. I'll identify that to you in a second. I want to thank you for considering this amendment to the municipal code. We think that it's going to clarify some language to make certain events more palatable and doable in the city of Elk Grove. In particular, the amendment's going to allow black powder usage for musket firing during some demonstrations, educational events, history events, that type thing. We believe that with this municipal code amendment, that it will answer those questions of whether these are appropriate or not. We are planning, at this point in time, and actually for some time, to hold an event that will actually have musket demonstrations. We've identified one. It's kind of our first annual Early California Days. We're in partnership with the Community Services District, and we've received a grant from the city to support this event. It's basically going to be a period of time from 1840s to the 1870s in Elk Grove region, showing life of what it was like to be living in those times. There'll be craftsmen, blacksmiths with different wares that they're going to show how to make and sell things, other craftsmen. They'll all be in period costumes, geared to children's activities, educating the people in Elk Grove and beyond Sacramento County of what's going on at that particular time. The CSD has been very strong in this event to try to make an annual event. We've been growing and growing rapidly as to who's coming into the event. We have different groups, like the Mormon Battalion, New York Volunteers, Sutter Sports coming down with their dozens, a mobile facility for educational things on history period of the time. So we think it's going to be a fantastic event on March 23rd and 24th of this year. I left flyers over there with the desk for your perusal at your convenience. This is an event that will, I think, reach out in an area that we haven't been able to reach out before. We planned an event in the past, and it wasn't acceptable. We think this one's highly acceptable. It's going to be very educational and informative for the people. It's a two-day event. It'll be an encampment, musket demonstrations, like I mentioned, as well as, we're going to have a stagecoach come in, rides, that type of thing. So it's really being built up as a class act. And we want to thank you for this amendment that you're considering, because we think it'll make this event like a Strauss event or like the Pumpkin Festival. So thank you very much. I'm available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Seeing no additional speaker, want to close public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 9, Chapter 9.08, Firearms. Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention. All right. And let's adjourn this meeting at 9:47 PM.